Needs to be a public hearing for any entity that is using the undivided local government formula different from the standard, correct? So it's the alternative formula. We do use an alternative formula. We revised ours. Jim, do you remember, was it two years ago or year before last?
Two or three years ago.
Two years ago.
We were hoping that that would then put us into the five-year cycle of having to review it, but because of this law change, it's a requirement that we have to meet within one year of the law change and that's every five years. So for the purpose of that meeting, I just want to verify, was public notice given for people to be able to provide public comment? I mean, or I'm sorry, entities that are involved in the local government distribution to be provide comment to the budget condition?
Yes.
In regards, so and that was in what papers?
It was the legal, so it went to Sherrin Valley Times, all those.
Okay, so let the record reflect such. At this time, I will open the hearing for any comment by any affected agency regarding the calculation of the undivided local government formula as a current.
I would just, when we revised it the last time, the county chair stayed the same.
Correct.
We took the local government fund away from the parks and we also took it away from Honey Valley.
Correct.
So and then those funds were redistributed to the townships and municipalities. So everyone saw an increase except the county, which stayed the same. And then those entities which we eliminated. Well, that was our proposal, but under the law, the county commissioners and the largest municipality in the county, being City of Charton, have vetoed, kind of veto rights over the formula. So they have to agree and then beyond that, a majority has to agree.
Right, so this isn't a revisiting of that formula. It's an acknowledgement to provide for comment regarding that formula. That formula will again be revisited in the five-year window.
I think it's our intention to keep the formula the same.
Yeah, I think it hadn't been reviewed two years ago for, I think we figured twenty some years, like forever. So I mean, we cracked open the mayonnaise jar and pulled it out. So having here no public comment, I will close that portion of the hearing and for the record, we will make note there was no comment provided and we can move on to the normal items on the budget. Okay? So here the new chair, right?
Mm-hmm. I'll call this meeting.
Excellent.
My job is pretty tough. I could leave.
Maybe alright.
You're gonna, you're gonna want that. They're gonna want that too. Don't worry.
So first up is Thompson Township. So they've signed in, you want to go ahead and run through the numbers?
Thompson Township submitted for their general fund, a beginning estimated cash balance of $238,284.96. They requested revenue in the amount of $169,728 and we will consider $169,934. Estimated expenses of $150,737.88 and an ending balance of $257,488.18. Road and Bridge, beginning estimated balance of $190,861.84. Requesting revenue in the amount of $304,144, which we will consider. Estimated expenses of $305,458 with an ending balance of $189,547.84. Fire Fund, beginning estimated balance of $258,899.35. Requesting revenue in the amount of $358,172, which we will consider. Estimated expenses of $318,0827. Ending cash balance of $298,244.35. Police Fund, beginning cash balance of $103,949.28. Requesting revenue in the amount of $109,095, which we'll consider. Estimated expenses of $103,443, leaving an ending balance of $109,601.28. And then they have a police reserve fund, which does not have any activity for 2025. Their total millage is 1.5 inside general, 1.2 inside road and bridge, 3.35 outside road and bridge, 5.95 outside fire, three even outside police, for a total of 15 mills. And they do have a levy on the ballot for 1.75 for fire and it's a renewal.
Let's go first.
Well, let, let me begin by bringing to your attention just in the general fund. My previous concern had been the amount of excess cash retained. Three years ago, you had 163% without collecting any tax revenue. Then it increased to 176%, then it went down 152% and now it's at 188%. That means to me, you have so much cash, you can operate for a year and almost two-thirds without any tax revenue. That is hoarding money. And as you know, I have hoarded. So I'm extremely concerned, not on how the money is being spent, but how it is being aggregated. You have too much money in the general fund and there's no indication that you have a magnanimous plan to distribute it. So I am one of three, my magnanimous plan is to give it back to the taxpayers once it comes, unless you have some plan that is yet to be disclosed. In the police fund, you've had a similar concern, but now you've spent a lot of the money. Or it's somehow, that's good, but I did not see a similar experience in the general fund. I'm sick and tired of it. I'm sorry, this is the first hearing and I get to vent, but it's venting on behalf of your taxpayers. You have too much of their money and either you give it back or you will. I have nothing for you.
Well, I'm not as gloom and doom, Chris. So I think with, you know, I always look at your estimated versus your actual balances and those are, those are pretty tight. I think you've been doing a good job. The road and bridge, there's, there's a bit of a variance there, but that's not, it's not too bad. And obviously the police levy fund, you kind of went upside down on that, but I think there were a lot of issues there and with management. So that's, that's understandable why that happened. You know, I, I think that that's been straightened out through some hard work of the trustees. So that's, that's good. Where are you at with, I mean, I know you purchased this building for the new police department. You had a capital expense there. Have you spent all that money or are there more capital expenses going? Cause I've heard you need to do work on that. Cause I mean, to Chris's point, while the amounts aren't huge as a percentage, you do have extra money, but I also know that you're, you're, you are in desperate need of some capital investment. So I don't think it's a matter of, we don't need the money. It's a matter of, you guys need to invest that money into the township because literally one of your buildings is falling over.
Yes, yes. So yeah, there's some improvements to that.
So what are you planning? I mean, where are you at with, cause you purchased that. So is that, is that reflected here or are we gonna see a hit here?
That was, that's where we used the capital reserve fund and then part of the ARPA.
Okay.
And so, yeah, they moved in there, we're out of that.
Okay. And then are there additional, I've heard there needs to be additional monies put into that building. Is that going to happen or what's the plan?
Yeah.
We're going to build a garage for our vehicles.
Okay.
Some other smaller amounts, things that need to be done.
Okay.
And then we have some loans.
And where you at, I know you've got that one road that, the name just gave me, where you split it with Lake County and there's a lot of problems there. You sorted that out or?
Yeah. We actually have what, three split roads?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the one's a disaster. Okay, yeah. And so what's going on there? Do you see spending some of the road money down or is the county chair gonna work on that?
The road is bad.
Are you familiar with one that we share with Montville?
Oh, maybe, I don't know.
That one is, we entered discussion with Montville, I need some improvements for that road.
Okay.
That's the dirt road yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, again, I think Chris has a point, but I, I can think of places where that money needs to be spent. I think you just need to put that plan into action.
And get people to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's where you're, cause the dollar amounts aren't that high.
Yeah.
There only one.
Well, there's another, more trustees back there, so yeah. They can't say anything. Okay, that's all I, that's.
Twenty years is enough.
Can you bring up the power?
That's all I had. But I, I thought your, your numbers were good. From a planning standpoint, I think you're doing a lot better than most people from a telling the taxpayers what you think you're gonna have and what that actually ends up being. I think you're, you're very much in the positive side on that.
Next page and then share that please. So I, I also look at this, like, we all, we all look at your numbers differently, right? We all come at it from our own disciplines and I think that's healthy because you see multiple ways and I don't think any one of us can profess to be expert at everything because we all have different biases. So I looked at it, I did look at cash carryover, but I look at it as an opportunity for you. So fortunately, whether it's because of ARPA money or whether it's because of good planning and budgeting, whatever the reasons are, your cash balances are healthy in almost all of your funds. So I, I looked at, the general fund has 170% carryover going into, from, from the end of your budget cycle. So I'm looking at futures. Chris tends to look backward for trends. Jim kind of is the intermediary between the two and I look as far out as you're presenting. So at the end of your budget presentation, 2025, you'll sit with 170% cash, which is healthy. You're, I combine all of your road-related funds and you get about 90% carryover without capital. I take capital out of the equation. Fire, you're at 125%, leisure 170%. Now, on surface, those look like they're huge numbers. I look at them, that's when you start looking at reserve funds. Because you have things that you know are coming, but you can't get them done in time. By in time, I mean for next year to come before the hearings, right? It's, it's a chase and we don't want you just to spend money for the sake of spending money. We want you to use good business practices. Reserve funds buy you a 10-year window and you can put money into those reserves if you need them for some other purpose, you can cash those all out. So it's a safe net for you. I, my understanding is, you probably have some other areas in the township that are gonna be invested in, like you have IT, IT investments or something of that nature, which could draw down some of this capital. And, and so in that regard, what I would encourage you to do is to look at pocketing some reserves. You've done one. I would look at a reserve for the general fund and probably a reserve for maybe fire because they're gonna have capital requirements. And even if it's not a lot of money, if you're putting away, because I don't think the dollars are a lot, the percentages are a lot. But you can draw that percentage down real quickly by putting 20 or 50 grand away and I think your problems go away in the short term and it makes you better long-term managers. That's what I would recommend. I've witnessed other townships who have followed that model, who are on a much larger scale and they see the return much quicker. You will see the return. It'll take three or four years, but then you'll get comfortable with, you kind of have your own little bank. And then when you need it, you have it for those purposes. So work with our office, we have standard footprints you can use for capital reserve funds. I would encourage you to do that. The, the 4901, that was a capital reserve for the building. The challenge I saw with that fund, and I just want to make note of it, is I don't know the full context that that fund was set up under. It has to be for a specific purpose. If it was for remodeling the fund, you probably should, let's say you set up a capital reserve fund to remodel an existing building, like a police station. But you change gears and say, look, it's not cost-effective, we're gonna buy a building. Well, that's different than the plan that you set up the reserve. You can use that money, but what you have to do is not spend it from that reserve. You have to move it back where it came from and then spend it from that source. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Cause I'm worried about the state auditor saying, you put it there to remodel, you spent it for a new building. You may just need to do it, like, just do a transfer, a paper transfer.
You already spent it.
Yeah, but you can, I think you can show a paper transfer. We may, work with Ron, he may be able to figure out a way. I just want to keep it clean with the state auditor, so he doesn't say, well, you technically violated the terms of that reserve.
Okay.
Cause reserves are very specific. You can get them all back, but you, you have to go through some mechanics and I don't want to see Ron file with that. So that's my only comment. I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's good news and so I encourage you not to move to the next stage and we'll, we'll help you as much as you need. So Kristen and Tammy are like reserve sabats. I mean, they, I'm an idiot, they're the sabats. So, so any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
You can second if it's still going though. Second?
It's okay. You'll be alright.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Thank you very much. Oh, and I'm gonna give you, if you've had anybody who has suffered from property damage as a result of the storms that shut power out, there are remediation methods they can use for their real property. Citizens may call you and say, hey, my home was damaged, what do I do? Keep this on file? You can always give them a copy of that. They can apply for a one-year reduction of value to offset that loss. Yeah, and if it's more than one year, they have to come before the board of revision. That's a one-year and it's by percentage. I think the percentage would be 50%? Based on the date of the event.
People probably don't know, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're putting it on our website, but there's a lot of people who just, just don't know. Yeah, I didn't know that either. Yeah, it's a standard, I mean, I got a call from somebody saying, you know, are we doing something? We've always had it. So we just don't advertise them because it's like all the other programs that we have or don't have.
Give them the stable one, true.
Yeah.
Oh, give them, oh, I thought I had separate ones. That's yours.
Okay.
Did I do it right? Yeah, I'm, I'm known for losing pick words. So you don't trust with pens, sharp knives or paper. So thanks for coming in, appreciate it. Okay, I'm needing anything on the reserve stuff, let us know. And you're sticking around for the next one, right?
Yeah.
Thanks everybody. See y'all.
Nice to have three trustees.
It is.
Yes.
Unheard of.
Huge.
It's just, it's a huge thing.
Okay, the next hearing is the Thompson Park District. Tammy, can you go through the numbers please?
Thompson Park submitted their budget with an estimated ending balance or beginning balance in 25 of $63,525. They're requesting revenue in the amount of $22,700. We are considering $22,482.28. Estimated expenses of $30,000 and an ending balance of $56,728. They have no village and nothing on the ballot.
Who wants to go?
I was just gonna plug.
This is really.
Where you from?
Yeah. So I went through, I mean, I'm not gonna waste my time on the power points. You submitted everything, it's good submission. I mean, the park is low overhead and you guys are, what could we say?
You do a lot with a little bit of money. You did for sure, so. Hey, Chris left you.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second, yes.
Chris ran with the bathroom.
Maybe he went to throw it.
No, he's.
He's psyching himself up for the Bainbridge one.
Yeah.
Thank you. So yours and then you, your parts don't equal. Okay. Thank you.
Nice seeing you. Take care.
You guys have a good one. You too. Okay. Bring on, if you hurry, Chris won't get back.
I know.
What we do is we water all of this food down, so it gets a lot of liquid.
Morning, Jim?
Morning.
Chuck?
Morning.
Hello.
Mr. Goodbye.
Hi Mike.
So we're in open hearing for Bainbridge Township. Tammy, can you run through the numbers please?
Bainbridge Township submitted a beginning cash balance for their 2025 budget of $1,433,104.27. They requested revenue in the amount of $1,827.896 and we will consider $1,829.134. Estimated expenses of $2,206,753.89, leaving an ending balance of $1,055,484.38. Road and Bridge, beginning balance of $465,568.31. Requesting revenue in the amount of $3,009.36.722, which we will consider $3,009.36.722. Expenses of $3,787.950 and the ending balance of $614,340.31. Police Fund, beginning balance of $2,056,274.86. Requesting revenue in the amount of $4,104,663.66, which we will consider $4,104,664. Estimated expenses of $4,745.266, leaving an ending balance of $1,415,672.86. Fire Fund, beginning balance of $550,144.39. Requesting revenue in the amount of $2,499.438, which we will consider. Estimated expenses of $2,744.577, leaving an ending balance of $305,539.39. They do have reserve funds for the general fund, the road and bridge and the police fund. Total millage for 2425 is 1.3 inside general, 1.7 inside road, 5 outside road, 12.25 outside police, 7.35 outside fire for a total of 27.6. There are two levies on the ballot. One is a renewal, two mills for road and one is an additional 2.75 for fire.
Want to go?
Sure.
Hi Jim.
This is not directed at personal staff entirely. I mean, here, here's, I, I got a couple issues. So as people know, one of my big issues with any budget is your estimated ending balance and what your actual ends up with. Because you tell the taxpayers, hey, we're gonna have $865,000 in our general fund and really you hit 2.5 million almost. So when I see those big variance, like a big variance like that, and then at the end of this year, you're estimating your ending balance at the general, it's 677,000. I, I would wager it'll be north of 2 million, unless you spent money on something that you're not aware of. Your general fund.
Which, oh, we're still in the general.
Yeah.
So.
Can I answer this for you?
Yeah.
So I, I looked at that too. Here, here's what, here's what my issue is. Look at their beginning balance. Their beginning balance, what they, what they said would be is a million dollars different than what it was.
Oh, I know, yeah.
It's cumulative error.
No, it is.
I, I think Jim, if you look at their actual expenses to their estimated expenses in the general fund, it couldn't be any closer.
Thank you.
I understand, but they gotta right the ship and it's been.
You, you can't right a cumulative error. There's no mechanism that makes that go. Rod, we talked about this. That's the problem with discharge.
Okay, but then look at the fire fund. So in 2023, you're telling your tax, now again, it's a bit of a cumulative error, but you're telling your taxpayers at the end of 2022, you're gonna have $6700 as an ending balance. You had 1.548 million. And then in 2023, you say your estimated ending balance is $67,000. It's 1.3 billion. So it's come down. So you're, you're, you're telling your taxpayers, again, you gotta find a way out of this. You're telling your taxpayers, hey, we're gonna have 123,000 as our estimated ending balance. I'm sure it's gonna be over a million dollars. And then you, but when you're telling your taxpayers that, you know, you put an additional tax levy on for firing EMS.
And what we did tell our chief is that she needed to find ways to save money in case we didn't pass a levy, which the levy didn't pass the first time we put it out. And so we've asked her to stop, the trustees have asked her to stop this capital expenses, to stop doing some of the things that we said we were going to do because they're trying to save on the penny they can for operating expenses and staff. So that one makes sense to me.
Okay, but in 23, you told your taxpayers, we're gonna end up, we're gonna have $67,000 at, at the end of the year.
Right.
And you really had $1,339,000. They shouldn't have passed the levy. No, that's when, that was before the levy was.
Well, but we do the 23 budget in 22, right? You know, you know how that works.
I understand, but that's my issue is you're asking for more money and, and the fund has a lot of money. Not, not as it does to store. I mean, you used to have crazy balances in there, over $4 million. So it's come down. I get that, but I think if you're making a case to your taxpayers, you gotta get those numbers typed up.
But those numbers are what we're working on. Hard to type. I mean, they really, we've asked her to stop spending money, except I think she has money on the charge.
I mean, she did that in 23. But then you, you should have lowered your estimated expense lower in 24 because it's still, it's lower, but it's not as low as when it started in 23. So those are my issues and I get, it does accumulate over time and it does take time to tighten those numbers up, but to me, that's what you're presenting to the taxpayer is, hey, this is what we're gonna end up with. And then there's these huge variances. I mean, when we certify like the first, you know, when we do the amendments at the beginning of the year, when no one comes to these meetings and we're sitting there and it said, okay, you know, here's the first amendment and here, here's the money we're certifying and the variance compared to, you know, what was submitted in the budget is millions of dollars that, you know.
But it's really not.
Remembering that from.
This is not, you're looking at, let me see what you're looking at. Yeah, you're looking at this. This is the thing that I think Chris puts together. And that's great, but if you look at what we said we were gonna spend and what we actually spent in each of those funds, they're very, very close. The only one that's a little bit off is fire because the trustees asked her to not spend anything. They stopped with training expenses, they stopped with capital expenses. So they're only spending operating.
She also had quite a few grants too.
Yeah.
In that area.
Yeah, that's exactly right. They've been going after every grant they could get. So if you look at the actual, what we said we were going to spend for the year and what we actually spent, they're very close in every category. So I feel pretty good about that.
Okay, well then you need to, I think you need to find a mechanism. They need to report to us that their estimated beginning balance is going to change.
Well, so.
Based upon what's happening in the current year. That's, that's my beef with you.
If I could, I've spent the last six years trying to, I mean, Chris has 28 years of experience using this sheet and that, that, that's a disadvantage to me. I've had six years. So the anomalies that I've seen centered, I ask myself this question. Did you begin the year with a wide variance? If you did, you're gonna end the year with a wide.
Correct.
If you're 100% perfect, you're gonna end up at the same variance at the end of the year because you can't enter and exit with a different variance unless you're off by either your revenue or your expenses. So the, the lines on this, we call it the Hitchcock sheet, that I look at are revenue and expenses. I don't look at beginning any balances because those are cumulative. So if you look at revenue, revenue is our fault. I'm saying that facetiously. It means we gave you more money than we told you we were gonna give, right? Cause we're giving you your estimated revenues. Now, you could also get outsourced.
Grants and things like that.
You could get ARPA, which ARPA blew it out of the map, right? So you gotta be careful, you have to factor that into your math and how you're analyzing the truth of these numbers. The part that you do have total control over is the expense line. And to your point, in the general fund, I couldn't ask for more. I mean.
We said we're gonna spend it, we spent it.
Exactly.
Makes me so.
Now, your variance is huge, but that's because your entry variance was huge.
Correct.
The, the one that I will take exception to is fire because I go all the way back to the beginning of twenty fifteen and I charted them, the variances in expenses. That's well before this anomaly with levies and no levies. In twenty sixteen, for example, it was a one point four million dollar variance in expense versus prediction. The next year, it's a one million dollar variance, the next year, a one point two eight million dollar, there's a pattern. Next year, three hundred and sixty nine thousand, that's not bad, no. The next year, seven hundred and fifty thousand, we're getting back up there, the next year, one point two five million, you see the pattern? So my, my challenge is management of that has to be better. Department heads have a tendency to give you a pie in the sky.
Correct.
And then they perform at a truthful level of what they're really gonna do. And that's what creates this disparity, they better realize they're gonna be accountable for the number they're predicting. You've done a good job as trustees predicting the general fund because you attained it exactly. The police have done a good job. Road, I've always viewed road as always a random number, Jim.
Absolutely.
Projects come, projects go, we know what happens.
When they get higher.
Prices don't, then prices get, you get a great price and you're like, what happened and your numbers go all over the map. Yeah, so I'm more lenient about that predictor.
Correct.
And that's not to say the police and fire don't have unexpected expenses, you just have to bring those to the table and say, hey, this is what happened, right? Um, so I'm less critical of your, of the balances, the end result balances, because I, I don't find them, I don't know how you can ever get yourself out of that hole. And, and that's an unfair pressure point, I think. Can, can you pop up my, so, so what I'm, what I'm asserting is a little different perspective. I use your ending budget submission cash carryover, that's what I use. And when you look at them, you're fifty four percent of the general fund, twenty one percent in all of your road funds combined, sixteen percent in fire. You're, you're optimal, you're exactly optimal. I'm looking, this is what happens when you create reserve funds. You are the classic example of how to make future carryovers reasonable by putting in a reserve fund. Because your extra money is buried in those reserve accounts and, and they're at your disposal to use, which you have to have reasons.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, the general fund, I think, is, is starting to come in tight alignment, fifty four percent, some people could argue that's a little high. Not for township your size.
I was gonna say, we have to have.
You've got a lot of things going on in that general fund and that's why that money is gonna be maybe a little bit bigger than normal. But at the end of the, at the end of the day, I'm comfortable with your percent cash carryover at the end of your budget submission. I mean, you could, we could look backward, but I, I have some questions about some other funds, we could do that offline. Basically, I don't understand the use of those funds, because I don't, you guys use numbers and I don't know what those numbers mean.
We have a bunch of funds that we want to close out.
I was wondering.
There's a bunch of them.
And there's some residual money, so.
Right.
Yeah, you probably capture those back and stick them in reserves.
Some of them have to go to court, we've talked to her about some of them.
Okay, that's.
It is our role, that's, it's the next thing, once we got the capital reserve funds done.
Yep.
We wanted to go through all of, because some of these can be, go away now.
But, but as you know, it's gonna take three years, maybe, maybe a little bit more before the reserve funds, I think, kick in, before you start figuring out. That's what we can do with that and, and that'll clean up your numbers and eventually to Jim's point, you'll start to collapse on that discrepancy. But you have to go off for a hundred years to make that couple million dollar discrepancy go to zero, how are you gonna do that? You have to be off by the exact amount to bring down that balance. You're, you're right on the numbers on, on expenses, so.
That's what I look at and we put, we put a report in front of the trustees every month uh, so that they can see where we are percentage wise for the year, this is what we said we're gonna spend, this is where we are.
Right.
And so they can kind of get an idea of where we are. We look at those numbers, so thank you, because those are the numbers that, you know, we said we're gonna spend this, this is what we're spending.
But again, we all look at these numbers differently.
I understand.
And I don't, I'm not saying mine is the right way, I'm not saying Jim's is the right way or Chris's is. I think the advantages we have is we all come at it from different angles for the best interest of the taxpayer. And then we have to clear out the, you know, the chaff from the wheat and figure out the way forward. That makes sense. I think you're doing the right thing with reserves, I encourage you to do more, there's tons of reserves available and the bigger the township, the more important reserves we call.
Absolutely.
We're doing, thank you, and that was the conversation, you know, in the last two years, when it seemed like fire was over, but then that truck got purchased and.
There's two trucks that one year, so in that one, twenty twenty one.
So your expenses jumped way crazy.
Still up six percent higher than we anticipated, but that's because the trucks came in.
Yep.
And there was such a delay in between there.
Then the good thing is buying out of the reserve fund then takes it out of the fire fund equation, your numbers doesn't jump anymore, your number stays constant. It really becomes an operating economy. And then you'll know, are they growing, are they shrinking, what are they doing? I mean, that's how you manage the business, I think, but that's, that's all I have. Terry, I think you were just mentioning, we do have an unexpected, unexpected cost that's gonna come out of the general.
General fund, yes, yeah, the, the town hall has to be redone, so it's, it's a very.
This year, so. Try and figure it out.
It's very serious. Is that, you have a, is that part of, is that a reserve element? Do you know?
Well, we started the reserve this year.
But you're not enough in there. So again, you're gonna catch up and that's, it's gonna take time, that's, that's all we can say.
So there will be some work coming out of that.
Expense wise, too.
So we'll let Chris know.
Yes, go ahead.
Morning.
Good morning. So the general fund, actual ending cash balance has been trending up in the past three years. It's now two point five million dollars, which was the ending cash balance of two thousand twenty three. That's enough to fund operations for full year and a third without any tax revenue. The year before, it was a little less, the year before that, it was a little bit more. Trend is in the wrong direction. I understand your estimated revenue, estimated expense are, are pretty close and that's good. But what that indicates is that the amount of cash that you have on hand is not necessary. So you could easily return a million dollars to the taxpayers and not have it impact you whatsoever.
Well, this town hall, which is gonna come out of general fund, is probably gonna be close to that.
Do you have an estimate?
We have estimates that range anywhere from seven hundred and fifty thousand to three point three million and we're now probably, we're, we're looking at everything. We've had, the trustees at the last couple of meetings have had the architects come in. Uh, we should be getting another estimate, which probably is gonna be the final one if all the trustees agree on it. So what we're thinking, it's going to be, it'll be less than a million, but we're not sure where that.
So what do you show the ending balance is gonna be?
They have two point five for two thousand twenty three.
I show one million for the end of twenty, at the end of the budget.
End of twenty five, it's a billion fifty four million.
Yeah.
Right, but they're about a million off. Let's, let's see, in two thousand twenty three, they had estimated any cash balance of eight hundred thousand dollars. It was a good estimate, the actual estimate, the actual cash balance is two point five million dollars, you were off by a factor of three.
But our expenses and our revenues were not.
And that's fine, expenses and revenues are fine, as I've indicated. Your ending cash balance is too large, so you could easily give a million dollars to the taxpayers. And I encourage you to consider that because you do not have a contract for this work on the hall to be done. You're looking at, you're looking at ideas and that's.
No, we're there.
But we're, how much have you budgeted for it?
Well, we haven't budgeted for it, we don't know what it's gonna cost, but it's gonna happen this year.
So it's not in the budget?
It's an emergency expense, I mean, it's like, what are you?
How is it an emergency? You have two and a half million dollars in cash, you're making five percent on your money.
That's why it's not in the budget, we didn't budget it because we didn't know how much it was going to be, yes, we have some money in there that we can use.
Was there a real failure?
We, we, a complete real failure, so we have looked for the last couple of three years to renovate town hall, whatnot. It, it's been a long process, can you do it legally because of office space versus, you know, not office.
You got an attorney general opinion on it.
This is the one where you have to take before the voters if it's for.
Well, yeah.
Possibly not, I mean, there, there.
There's a pending bill, I think it passed the House, didn't it?
I see, I don't know.
Get rid of that.
Okay, good, I was gonna drop to you about that one, because as it rolled down, then it comes to, you know, function over fashion, you know, what do you do? We have, DS Architects came through that building, they know every aspect of that building. So, you know, you, there's so many things you have to comply to, which make complete sense if you're gonna renovate the whole building, but then the architects let us know the town hall, the gymnasium, the roof is an absolute failure and, and, you know, you have some people in the township that have been there forever who don't want to see that gymnasium taken down. You have people on the other side saying, you, you can't just spend to spend, you know, right now, they're just saying the trusses. I've talked to at least three different experts on, can we marry the trusses? I've learned more about trusses and roofs and inside too, you use Latin language, you can't fix this roof inside, you have to take the roof off. It's about seven hundred thousand dollars for the roof, the building, so to me, I don't think that's money well spent for our township. I think you have to scale that building back because we have plenty of buildings now, we have Centerville Mills, we have Burns Lindau, we have buildings that can be utilized for our meeting spaces and our needs of our township, so do we need this big space? So you put it out to the people, but at the end of the day, about six months ago, we found that's an unsafe space, we have scaffolding up there. So now, yes, we are in a spot, when Janice says emergency, that's what she means, it, it was going to be the renovating of this phenomenal building, but now it's, it's a need. So, so that's where we are. Not renovating anymore and, and you know, we had so many, and you know, the trustees are at different places, some people just think you gotta do the right thing economically. Some people, you know, preserving history is very important, but we also have, you know, the historical society right next to us that Bainbridge spent money on all those years ago. So now, our last meeting, we made the decision, the architects are, are coming in, they've gotta show us, but they've already proposed how to scale it back, what it's gonna cost and it's, it's a big number. But economically, it's right thing for the future, in my opinion, as a trustee, you know, to move forward. So those funds, they're, they're gonna have to be utilized.
You could, you, you could solve Chris's objection immediately without spending money. I, I really shouldn't spend money until you know what you want.
At all.
But if you have a million dollars, you could set aside and just open a reserve fund for that, for that purpose, move it over, it's out of the general fund.
Yes.
It's legitimate, legitimately being accounted for to the taxpayer. And then when you need it, you just spend it or if you don't, turns out you don't need it, you pull it back to the general fund and use it for another purpose and.
And maybe we will do that, but we're gonna find out at this next meeting how quickly this is gonna happen, because right now, we're spending money every month just to have it.
Right.
Could be a hundred and eighty, we have final plan approved in hours, so maybe we do that. So the architects, we, we gave them the go ahead now to look at everything, so. While we call it, to make the plan.
Yeah, you, you can't just start spending seven hundred, you have to have a lot of money.
To make a plan, so that wasn't gonna be my question, you're saying a February meeting, what is that, I'll show up to, to reassess? I, I, you, you guys know me, I'll show up to all these things. What, what's the date, what's the time? It's important.
I know.
What is the February meeting, when you reassess? I, I would gladly be here.
No, with people, so what happens is when you, after your budget's approved, we always do a first amendment, there's, everybody admits their budgets at the beginning of the year.
Of course.
And that's when we see the huge, oh, they said they were gonna have this much, they really have this much. So then, that's the meeting where, where there's several, usually if that happens over several meetings, then I'm timely for, you're usually very timely, so.
I mean, I'm at somewhat of an advantage with the data because I have more communication with Bainbridge on fiscal matters. So I'm kind of more aware of, you know, the process of creating the reserves, the moving of the money, you're not totally done.
The building's a legitimate issue.
It's, it's hard to, it's hard to pin you in the middle of a transition, I mean, I, I don't think that's fair. Um, and even after it's done, it take, we, we've proven it takes several years for the dust to settle, so to speak. So, I mean, Chris's points are valid, but the other side of that coin is, are you in the process of a question? I, you've satisfied me, from my perspective, yes, you're in the process, therefore, I don't think it's prudent to do any drastic action. We just, I would encourage you to continue, that, that's, that's all I can do.
We don't have a capital reserve fund for fire yet, we're hoping a bunch of gases, that eventually we'll be able to open one for them. But we could do a capital reserve fund for this and maybe we'll go ahead and do that.
Yeah, there's, there's a option.
We have a plan already set up, so you're saying maybe we could put additional.
You'll have to add an element, call Miller, I think you guys use more dots.
Yeah.
You'll, they'll add an element, they'll give you a new amount yearly and that'll dump a bunch of money over. Um, and you can tell them, we have X number of dollars that we can afford right now to allocate and they'll, they'll start with that load. Because that's gonna be a sooner rather than later expenditure, right? So they don't have twenty years to save money for now. You're like in year twenty one, for twenty, for twenty year life, right? You're already casting cheap stuff, yes, so that's, that's.
And our re-, our revenue this year has gone down too because of the village. Um, that we, we did a transfer from the general fund to the police fund because we reduced their levy to give back to the taxpayer. So that has also, even though we didn't project for it last year, it did do that, so, so there is a bigger transfer in this year.
Sure, sure.
I don't hear a promise to set up a reserve fund.
Yes, we did.
We had.
Said we would.
You said you would consider.
No, we're gonna, well, we have to, there's a process to it, Chris, I think tomorrow we have to talk to Lord Johnson, Heather Marie Valery.
And that.
I'll do it tomorrow.
They would have to adjust their twenty five budget.
Now, it would, it'll come out as, as a variance in next year's budget, but it'll be absorbed in this year's fund. That, that's the problem, this is a rear view mirror, you can't fix that.
But it'll show us the transfer out, it'll show us the expense.
It will.
So it won't mess up the.
But it'll, and now it's gonna show their expenses are greater than what they projected because they're moving it.
Well, good, maybe that'll fix the million dollar variation in their estimated balances.
Yep.
A possible move.
Second, yes.
Yes.
No.
Um, the last thing I just want to let you know, if you've got any residents who are, who were damaged in the storm right now, if you could keep this, um, that's available online as well. They can submit for structural damage to their home, they get a one year treat by percentage. Um, it's straightforward how to do that.
Put it on our website.
Maybe make a call and you can ship them to us or whatever you want to do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Don't go away, I know you want to get out of here.
No.
Not alone.
Come on, let's have coffee.
Thank you.
Think that up?
Thanks.
Have a good day on.
You too, thank you all.
We gotta get back on track here.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, next up is Troy.
Come on up.
Okay, next budget hearing is for Troy Township. Um, James, I'm going, trust, we've got two trustees, this has never happened.
Are they allowed or one has to be a?
Um, it depends, if you're both going to, and Jim can tell.
Yeah, one of you can't speak unless you're gonna, unless you advertise this as a meeting.
Correct, yeah, we did not, okay, so, somebody, somebody will be quiet. Uh, Tammy, can you run through the numbers?
Uh, sure, Troy Township submitted their twenty twenty five budget with a beginning cash balance in their general fund of a hundred and six mil, thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty four cents. They requested revenue in the amount of two hundred and sixty seven thousand three seventy nine, we, we will consider two hundred and sixty five thousand seven seventy eight. Estimated expenses of two hundred and fifty six thousand two eighty, with an ending cash balance of a hundred and sixteen thousand two twelve twenty four. Road and Bridge, estimated beginning balance of two hundred and twenty eight thousand two sixty ninety cents. Requested revenue in the amount of two hundred and seventy eight thousand three eighty six, we will consider two hundred and seventy nine thousand three forty nine. Estimated expenses of two hundred and seventy five thousand, ending balance of two hundred and thirty two thousand six oh nine ninety. Fire Fund, beginning estimated balance of two hundred and seventy two thousand four sixty seven fifty four. Requested revenue in the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand one ninety seven, we will consider five hundred and twenty nine thousand six eighty two. Estimated expenses of five forty eight seven hundred and ending balance of two hundred and fifty three thousand four forty nine fifty four. Uh, they have two mills inside general, one mill inside road and bridge, five outside road and seven point four outside fire for a total of fifteen point four mills. And they do have a four point five mill fire levy renewal on the ballot in November.
Who wants to go first?
I'll have the honor. I have absolutely no trouble with your general fund, well done. Road and Bridge, not good. As last year, I think I made a bet, that the actual cash balance would be four hundred thousand dollars. Cause you had indicated it would only be seventy thousand. I'm sorry to say I was wrong. I'm sorry to say I was wrong. But you did have a cash balance of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. I was off by a lot of hundred dollars. Four hundred thousand dollars was my guess. That is enough money for you to operate for a year and almost two-thirds without any additional tax revenue. As has been observed before, that is unacceptable. There was no mention last year of a reason to have so much cash. Patch road is no longer an issue, that's been dealt with. So unless you indicate to me that you have a plan to spend several hundred thousand dollars out of road and bridge, which should be a really easy do, I'm out. I'm, I am, you know, I've been doing this a long time. The taxpayers don't have any understanding of these budget numbers. You all do, and you're benefiting from it. That benefit is coming to a halt from my perspective. I'm also slightly concerned about the fire fund. You only have enough cash to operate for half of the year, but you said you're going to put an addition on the firehouse.
The addition is done.
Paid for?
Yes.
That's wonderful news. But again, my concern is road and bridge, that should be an easy area to address. I have nothing further.
Can you call, um, Troy's, oh. So similar to Chris, I look at your December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five ending balances. Kind of life can you go on at that point? And just going to click it to the next one and then share it. Okay, I show the general fund, you'll have forty-six percent carryover, it's right at the target. We can argue, should it be thirty percent, should it be fifty percent? You're in the sweet spot. If you combine all of your road-related funds, to Chris's point, you have a hundred and twenty-four percent. What that screams to me is create a reserve, you're going to need a plow truck at some point, you're going to need equipment for road. Just create a reserve fund and move some of that money over so you protect it. So that when, you know, your road guy comes in and says, we need a hundred and ten thousand dollar equipped plow truck, you don't go, oh my gosh, where are you going to get the money? You just draw it out of your reserves, pay for it, and everybody's happy and you start funding it again. That's pretty easy to do. Fire fund, is it forty-eight percent? This is all without capital, because I figure reserves are what capital should be used for. So you could argue that is slightly high, again, fire has a lot of capital.
We're purchasing ambulance.
So again, that would also be something, longer term, I would recommend, create a reserve fund now. What are ambulances, what's the life of an ambulance, twelve years, eleven years, something like that?
Running on one that's like twenty years.
Okay, well, you beat the odds, but you know what I'm saying? You've got time, you can save a little bit every year.
Yeah.
Put it away, rather than this big spike and then you're in trouble, you know? So to me, this screams, you at least need a road reserve fund, I would recommend, and I would think about a fire reserve. And that will satisfy Chris's concern with cash in roads. If you have a project, here's the worry everybody has. If I create a reserve fund and I start putting away for a truck, and then we have a road issue that we have to pave someplace and I need more money, what do I do? You just cash out that reserve, put it back where it came from, and spend it for the road project. And then as soon as you get more money again, you put it back in reserve and start over. These are not one-way streets, yeah. So it's going to take time, and you need to be patient with yourself, but that's what I see in your budget, that I think saw.
We have right now four hundred thousand that we have to write checks for.
Good.
Work just got done, we paved Great Lakes Cheese Parkway, what were the other two? And those...
So that's going to delete that cash.
So we have four hundred thousand that I have to write checks for.
Well, remember, remember, I'm looking at the cash balance at the end of twenty twenty-five. So this money should still be there, right? Because I would guess you would have known that those bills were gone. If that's the case, you want to bleed down that hundred and twenty-four percent.
Yeah.
Something more reasonable, but have the cash somewhere else. I mean, there's no question, if you don't need it for any other purpose, we should give it back to the taxpayer. But, but it just seems ironic that we would give it back to the taxpayer, then immediately ask the taxpayer for money to buy a truck. I mean, what are we doing here? So we all know we need equipment. So that's my recommendation. And we can help you with those, the mechanics of setting those up, they're not that complicated. You have to do it a certain way, I've worked with Jim's office, we have a template, it's pretty much cookbook. The trustees initiate it, you set it up for them, and then if they need the money for something else, you make sure it goes back where it came from. If that, if that makes sense, yeah.
It does make some sense, but you've got to remember, our system is that we use a road contractor, we don't own any equipment.
Okay.
And our biggest...
But you do have road projects.
We do, I got, I got three roads to resurface that I could do next year.
Okay.
Any of them could bring the figures down to anything you want me to bring them down to. And I got cooperation from the engineer's office. He said, anything I give them, they'll work, make sure they work on it and it'll be ready.
So, you know, you don't have to just reserve for trucks, you can reserve for roads, for projects. So, and that helps you, if you're saving up to pave a big project, and it takes you multiple years to save up, your cash balance is going to get huge, right? He's going to get excited because that cash balance gets huge, but you know it's coming in two or three years. Well, you can, you have up to ten years to save that money. So you can hedge your bet, because we know what happens if the price of asphalt triples tomorrow, are you going to pave the roads? Or are you going to wait a year to see if it comes down?
Go to a smaller, shorter road.
Yeah, you use, use common sense, and we don't want you to break from common sense just because you have cash and you're going, and want to spend it. I don't think, you know, just spending money is the right attitude. Spending it prudently is the right attitude. So reserves give you a cushion, so I would encourage you to consider that. That's it.
Do you think your trustees would approve setting up a reserve fund in the very near future?
I don't think they would have a problem with it, but we do have projects that we know we have the money allocated for right now.
Well, you didn't put it in the budget though, for twenty-five.
Oh, for twenty-five, correct.
Because you've got that cash. If, as all of your Walter indicates, if you set that up, that changes everything.
Yeah.
It changed my attitude.
You said you have four hundred thousand outstanding bills on road and bridge right now?
We should be getting those in, but the work was done within the past couple of weeks.
So you're already a hundred thousand more in your estimated expense for this year.
Twenty twenty-five cash balances. In your motor vehicle license, you're predicting in twenty twenty-five, you'll have only twelve thousand in the license tax. But you'll have a hundred and forty-eight thousand in gas tax, you'll have two hundred and thirty-one thousand in road and bridge, and then in your permissive, I'll find it. You're going to have another fifty-four thousand bucks. So you've got a couple hundred thousand of wiggle room, I think. To Chris's point, that, you're not a, you're not a Bainbridge township.
Yeah.
Your percentages move quickly for you, right? You don't need a lot of money to move a big percentage. I think, I think to Jim's question, you can, I think you can still do both, even considering the bills you have to pay. But you're the mathematician when it comes to what you know you've accounted for and haven't yet accounted for. We're just going off the documents you submitted, so it could be, this could be old data, because you've submitted it over a month ago already and things move quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, when you mentioned the reserve, unlike fire and rescue, or fire and medical, it's two different categories you're saving for. You're saving for an ambulance or you're saving for fire apparatus. With roads, can it just be roads or does it have to have a label on it?
No, it could be just for road construction projects, and you could pull from all of those funds. You could pull from any road-related fund and the general fund. Remember though, when you move from the general fund, you've got some challenges there because you don't always get it back.
Yeah.
If you were to cash that out for the project, you could pay for it out of that reserve. But if you need it for something other than that project, you can suck it back from where it came in its entirety. So it's, it's a very flexible tool.
That's wonderful, sounds wonderful to me.
I mean, the problem is, it's gotten some bad connotations by the state, because they've convinced trustees, at the local government conference, they convinced trustees that it's a one-way street. It's not a one-way street if you do it according to what the prosecutor has set up. The, the resolution you passed gives you, the trustees, the authority to revoke it by motion. That, that's where the power is. So it's, it's a savings account for a purpose, and if you use it for that purpose, you spend it out of it. If you don't, you can pull it back where you got it from. But you have to do that, it's a ten-year window.
Yeah, I thought your general fund was very good. I, I think they've beaten the road bridge thing to death, but I think you can right that ship pretty easily. Your fire fund is all over the place, but I know you've had some significant management problems there. So I, I think that explains, maybe part of the problem with your road is you keep, you keep spending. Your actual expenses for the past three budget cycles have been less than your estimated. But it sounds like your actual is going to be more than your estimate, so I think that'll get that movement in the right direction. So I'm, I'm good, I thought, I thought it was pretty good. So move to approve.
You and KB, you're Steven, for me.
Um, we're ready to buy the ambulance cycle that you've... I talked to the chief Saturday and thinks get what he needs for like two seventy-five to three hundred. And that's a two-year process, so it would be in payments, what he explained.
Okay, I'll second Jim's motion.
Yes.
Yes. A very light...
The problem thing is you got to get that reserve fund set up.
If you have any residents who have had structural damage from storms, this is an ability for them to get some relief for one year.
Okay.
Keep that, you can also just refer to us.
Okay.
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 It has to be structural, it has to be like to the home, it can't be like just a tree we got in my backyard. But it's a percentage of their value for one year. So we've got, we had a lot of damage. So this is yours. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Take care.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me know if we can help you.
Lot of red on that one.
Just zero.
It's coming out of zero, it's like, that's a problem.
Yeah, and it's non-stopping.
Sharten Township next.
Yep.
They're out there, they want to come in. Who out there? Greetings, greetings.
Morning, gentlemen.
Are you guys going to open a meeting or anything? You know, no?
My goodness, no.
One trustee here?
No, there's two trustees, Jacob, you're doing sir.
This is your local government, if you could initial one page and then you keep the other page.
Okay, um, we are going to open the hearing for Sharton Township. It is ten oh five, anyway. Soon as Tammy gets a moment, she'll start with the numbers and you'll go through the budget.
Sharton Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget. With the beginning, beginning cash balance in twenty twenty-five in the general fund of a hundred and ninety-three thousand, four ninety-three ninety-nine. Requested revenue in the amount of four seventy-seven, seven eighty, which we will consider five hundred and eleven thousand, one eighteen. Estimated expenses of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven sixty-seven, leaving an ending balance of two hundred and five thousand, eight forty-four ninety-nine. Road and bridge, beginning estimated balance of a two hundred and four thousand, one eighty-one sixty-one. Requesting revenue in the amount of one million, three twenty-six, seven fifteen. We will consider one million, two ninety-two, seven ninety-two. Estimated expenses of one million, three seventeen, three fifty. Ending cash balance of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six twenty-three sixty-one. Fire fund, beginning estimated balance of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four twenty-six, seventy-three. Requesting revenue in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, one sixty-one. Will consider four hundred thousand, nine seventy-eight. Estimated expenses of six hundred and seventy-one thousand, forty-five dollars, leaving an ending balance of negative six thousand, six forty, twenty-seven cents. They have millage for twenty-four, twenty-five, one point three inside general, one point four inside road and bridge. Five outside road and bridge, two point five outside fire for a total of ten point two mills. They do have a one levy on the ballot for November, fire renewal. And they did have a levy passed in March, a three-mill additional road and bridge.
Chris? I'd ask that you go to that red, black sheet, it'd be the second page.
I just thank you.
He sees red a lot.
I see it, I wanted to correct it. It's your history for the past twenty years, I've been doing this a long time.
Okay, I'm sorry, sort of, when you guys call it, I'm colored black, so. It's a black.
Apparently Chris's too.
So I didn't mean no offense.
Go down to road and bridge. For two thousand twenty-four, you previously had an estimated ending cash balance of zero. Actual cash balance was four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I would say that's horrible budget. So let's look at the year before. Estimated ending cash balance, which came from the township, was thirty-eight thousand dollars. The actual cash balance was two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Now, the good news is, you're actually forecasting a cash, any cash balance now of two hundred and four thousand dollars. Your estimated ending cash balance for last year was two thousand dollars. I believe there is an opportunity to do much better budgeting.
Can I say something?
Sure.
That was the same advice that you gave us last year, and we took that to heart. Being that I actually sat down with Dr. Walter, did some explanations on things, so we kind of set the path forward. Going in, actually, Mr. Lighty was in the meeting as well. We took all the previous advice to heart, and I think you'll see in the twenty twenty-five budget, we estimated for around eighteen to twenty percent. Carryovers for the next spring. And we're also going down the road of making several other changes that'll make our budget not only more understandable to the residents, but to you guys as well. Notwithstanding the fact that we've got a reserve fund consultant coming in to take a look at our operations. And we're hoping to contract with them so that we can start the process of reserve fund budgeting.
Oh, so I'm very encouraged by that. If you go down to the fire levy category, go down to the estimated ending cash balance for two thousand twenty-five, it's fifty-six thousand dollars. See that?
Yes.
Um, my wild ass guess here is it's going to be closer to three hundred thousand. I could be wrong, I hope I am wrong. But every indication is that the...
I think you're right.
A better budgeting process is underway. So you might want to make sure that that better budgeting process applies to all of your budgets, not just general.
If I could add one thing, I know she mentioned that we had a road, fire levy on the ballot this year. We contemplated going back and forth on whether or not to put that levy on the ballot. And we decided to go ahead and keep it as a renewal. But our intention, so if that levy were to pass, we are going to ask to not collect it for January twenty twenty-four. Twenty-five, I'm sorry.
So I know it indicates you contract with Sharp.
Correct.
So you own the equipment?
No, I'm sorry.
You own nothing?
No, I'm sorry.
You have, uh, is this a replacement levy you're putting on the ballot? So that renewal will fund your operations.
It pays for the contract with Sharp.
Yeah, Sharp, okay, good. Really important you guys come. I have nothing further.
Yeah, it's not good. What, why would the road, road bridge, estimated revenue and estimated expenses, they just don't have them? We know why. For twenty twenty-five? No, 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 I'm looking at the far right. Oh, you did?
Nice.
Well, that's. Well, that, those are big numbers. So. Just so you know, Mr. Lighty.
Because you just passed a levy.
You just passed a levy, yeah, I mean, six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So what it, what, what plans do you have? I mean, your estimated expenses are going up. More than doubling at road. So you're going to spend that levy money, but do you have projects planned out for that?
Uh, our road superintendent has sat down with the county engineer and done a gasby study of road needs. And it's just been completed. Um, he's supposed to present that to us either at this meeting or the next meeting. For us to pick which of the variety of roads that need to be paved. We are approximately each to ten years behind a normal repaving schedule. So we anticipate that a traditional levy is going to go towards major road improvement projects every year.
Yeah. Normally I would probably vote no on this. However, I commend you for. I mean, when I see zeros or eight dollars left as estimated balances. Nobody believes that's true, but I commend you for going and meeting with the auditor staff and trying to come up. With some estimated beginning balances to, to correct that issue. I still think your estimated beginning balances are off. But. Two hundred thousand is a lot better than two thousand. Two hundred and sixty-three thousand is a lot better than eight dollars. So I do commend you for taking those steps and.
We.
I should mind you as well.
So I think it's going to be two to four years. For us to go through this whole cycle. And I'm hoping, uh, we can meet maybe a couple more times with Dr. Walter. Um, as far as changing our chart of accounts goes and everything else like that. But, um.
So, so moving from zero-based budgeting, which is what we had been doing to non-zero-based is, it's painful. Because you, you get into this oscillation cycle, right? You overestimate and you underestimate because you're coming off of zero.
Everything accounting comes back when next year.
Yeah. So, you know, you're on the right path. You just need time to get there. Um, what I've done is I ran your, um, I, I look at your ending balance predictions for twenty twenty-five. And I look at, um, a couple of aspects. You're, I'm looking at your general fund, you're forty-four percent.
Yes.
Without capital. All of your road funds combined, you're at fifteen percent. That, that's, that's low. As Jim just said. We know it's going to be low. It's going to be higher than that number because you can't live on fifteen percent. You can't pay a road group. You need at least thirty percent to get through the first quarter of tax collection. I, I think road is even more susceptible to needing more carryover than most departments because projects are so indeterminate. When you think you're going to spend a million dollars on a road, it can, it could easily come in at one point three million. It can come in at eight hundred thousand. It, it's just a random, and those are huge projects. Your fire and ambulance is spread at the sweet spot of twenty-five percent. I couldn't ask for a closer prediction. That's, I think it's. A little bit low of optimal, but it's fine. The, the things that I would like you to look at though is I look at all of your mechanical transfers within your accounting system.
Yeah.
And in twenty twenty-four, I found a discrepancy in your transfers in versus your transfers out. So you're, you're not accounting for about thirty-three thousand dollars.
No specific to ARPA?
Uh, no, it's out of the general fund into some other related funds. Just, you'll have to do the math. That's why your numbers don't match our numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. And then in twenty twenty-five, those transfers are off another twenty-seven hundred bucks. So you just got to find those. The, the deficiency with this is UAN should do, in my opinion, a check, right? When you do a transfer in.
It'd be nice.
It should give you a dialogue saying you don't have an adjoining transfer, you know, a transfer out for that transfer in. It's got to match, but they don't do that. So you have to. And if you're in the middle of doing something and then you get a phone call. Oh, I finished that.
Yeah.
You didn't finish the other half. That's what I'm suspecting happened. So you're going to want to clean up because that's thirty-five grand in a year, in the two-year span. You're going to want to make that right. So again, as we talk and I, I commend you for reaching out and meeting with us. I think we've agreed, reserve funds are your future. You're going to need to do that. It's good for you. It's good for the taxpayers. Great for the budget commission. Cause we can better analyze your carryover because we take out the variables. That's what reserves do. They take out the, the really wild numbers. They normally swing cash balances. So I, I think you're on the right path, but you're going to need three to four years to get there.
Yes.
And so don't freak out because it's not going to be over now.
Says that with, uh, Tammy, and Tammy helped me with the, uh, line number two. Yeah. So I was starting to work on.
Yeah, I didn't, I know you caught this year's, the twenty twenty-five. I didn't know if you checked one twenty-four. So that, that's going to change in beginning balances and, and all of that, right? Okay. So I, I'm with that. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, yes.
Yes. So you'll have to repeat everything we've said for the next three years until you're.
Yes, sir. No problem, no problem.
As soon as we get, uh, more of your time.
Sustained? Uh, well, fortunately Fury left because I think he's made some promise to himself to vote no on everything.
Just, uh, Schedule A and Schedule P that is submitted.
Okay.
It basically superpowers all the rates that you put in your budget and that needs to be sent back to honor.
I guess we got our next one. So can we?
August twenty-first?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay. So here's your budget information. You'll use this certificate to do your temporaries at the end of the year. Don't use that before the temporaries.
Okay.
Um, the other thing is if you had any residents who experienced storm damage as a result of what occurred. Um, they can apply for a one-year relief if it affected the structure of their home.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's based on when the damage occurred in a year. You, you don't, it's the, it's the DT twenty-sixths. So I'll give you a copy of that. You could either send them to us or you can give them that and let them fill it out and send it to us. Okay? Just if you have somebody coming in complaining saying, hey, it fell in my garage and I'm not going to get to it. I'm going to pay tax on this garage?
Then we tell them it's fifty percent.
We're in a fifty percent range. Yeah. Which is, I mean, it's good. It's fifty percent of the value. You're taking. I mean, better than nothing, right? Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you for that. I didn't know you were a night owl.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I saw yours and I said, I gotta answer him.
You can't answer it.
It's only two o'clock in the morning.
It's still early, sir.
Okay, Burton Township. Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Okay, we're going to open the hearing for Burton Township. Um, it is ten twenty. We're shredding documents as we speak. Must be Chris's blue sheets or red sheet that he calls them, right? Tami, can you read the numbers please?
Burton Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with the beginning cash balance in their general fund of two hundred and thirty-two thousand nine eighty-two fourteen. They requested revenue in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand one ninety-six, which we will consider three hundred and sixty thousand four eighty-one. Estimated expenses of two hundred and seventy-two thousand eight twenty-one, leaving an ending cash balance of three hundred and twenty thousand six forty-two fourteen. For the road and bridge fund, they submitted a beginning cash balance of one hundred and sixteen thousand nine ninety-four ninety-five. Requesting revenue in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand seven ninety-three, which we will consider. Estimated expenses of what five hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, leaving an ending balance of a hundred and three thousand thirty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Fire Fund, beginning cash balance of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven thirty-four oh nine. Requesting revenue in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand seven oh one, which we will consider. Estimated expenses of three hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars, leaving an ending balance of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight thirty-five oh nine. Uh, millage for twenty-four twenty-five is two inside general, one inside road and bridge, four point one outside road and bridge, three point two five outside fire. For a total of ten point three five. They do have, uh, fire and EMS renewal on the ballot in November.
Okay, who wants to go first?
I, I will, before you guys jump all over them, because I think I have some knowledge.
People are jumping all over.
Cause I'm looking at the sheet. There's some issues with the sheet. So let, let's talk about the building project you have, which is. Cause when you, when you glance at the sheet, what jumps out at you is, well, you, you're a little overfunded here. In road and bridge and the general fund, which I'm sure Chris is going to drive that point home. And, and I would agree with that normally, but let, let's, I know we've had. And again, I think I'm privy to more information than most people. I know we've had some serious challenges with this building project. So why don't you tell us what's going on, what type of money we're looking at? And that, and that, that's going to be done this year. I mean, that has to be done by year end, right? So. Yeah. So where are we at with that?
Well, um. We, we have. Portions of the cost coming out of the general fund, the road and bridge fund, and then we do have some ARPA funds that are contributing to the cost. Um. So, I mean, at this point, we, you know, we have a estimate of what we are willing to spend.
Yeah, where is that at? Where are you?
Um, I believe it's right around here.
Yeah, I knew it was a big number.
Yeah.
And I think you can afford eight hundred thousand.
Yes.
But if you, and I guess that's why I wanted to go first. If you plug that eight hundred thousand, I mean, you have to get it done this year because you have to spend that ARPA money.
Correct.
And you do, I mean, anybody who's been out there, you need a new road garage. I mean, I can't believe it survived the last storm. So the, you know, so I think if you plug eight hundred thousand in here with your general, your road and bridge, and then that ARPA money. It. It changes this dynamic quite a bit and goes from something where if, if I didn't know that and I saw these numbers, I'd be, I'd be pretty hard on you, but I know what's going on here. And I know that you need to do that. And I know you're under the gun and it has to be done by the end of the year. And I know the efforts you've been making working with my office to try to get it done. So you get a pass from me. Uh, uh, because of that. So that's all I had.
So my notes indicate from in two thousand twenty-three, the estimate is eight hundred thousand dollars. Nothing was done there. Uh, how much ARPA money do you have available to put into this project? Off three.
Three hundred and twelve thousand.
So do you think it's the trustees? Position to pay for it out of a combination of road and bridge and the general fund?
Well, it's. We've, we've been very concerned with the project because, um, we had an apron concrete in front of the building, which we kind of. Are considering not putting it in as part of the project because it's. We, we just want to make sure that this project's going to work and we just. I think the reserve fund idea is going to work out real good. I, I've learned that through what you're talking about. I think, and we can talk later, Chuck, on whether or not that would be a good option for that, but. I don't know if I answered your question, Chris. So.
Well, the, uh. I look at hard cash. In two thousand twenty-three, you had an ending cash balance of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That was more than enough money to cover your expenses for two full years.
But for road and bridge?
No, general, general fund. If. If it's your intention to take a couple hundred thousand dollars out of that and put it into the building project.
Yes.
That would group, that would significantly ameliorate your cash position.
Yes, correct. We have three hundred thousand dedicated in the general fund for our building project.
This. Coming year.
In twenty twenty-four.
If you do that, I'm in. If you don't. I am long gone and I will work night and day to get these guys to come with me. It's been going on for too long.
I get, I, I, and that's why I'm here. I'm gonna, I'm not the chairman this year, but I'm here because we're going to make this project work.
Well, and, and frankly, Dan, you should have your colleagues here too.
Well.
This is your day in court.
I agree, but I can't, you know, I don't have any legal power to enforce them up here.
Yeah, but you're smart.
I'm not going to go to the bus because I just got a text on Saturday from one of them. It's not going to be here and the other one's working. So I'm like, I'm still working too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the, if you don't get the project done this year, you're going to lose three hundred thousand dollars for your taxpayers because you have to give the ARPA money back, which is a huge failure in leadership. People, anybody who asks to give the ARPA money back, it should, should get voted out of office. I mean, they know, it'd be very blunt. So. The, you gotta spend the money. I think part of the problem you guys have had is you get these big numbers. Guess what? Stuff's expensive. Okay? You, you, you know, your road garage is, it's not a good situation. And I know you're like, well, you know, should we put in this apron and. I think you guys spend too much time trying to save a hundred grand and it's taken you over two years to get this thing done. You, you just got to pull the trigger and do it.
Yeah.
Because you have the money. You're not going to, you're not going to get yourself in a jackpot if you spend eight hundred or even if it goes to a million bucks. But you, you could survive that, right? You, you just got to stop worrying about the little things and you have to, no matter what, you have to get it done. I know you're nodding because you probably sit in those meetings and want to strangle these guys.
Hey, come on.
But you, you, the three of you need to get on the same page and just pull the, you got to pull the trigger and do it.
We, we are on the same page.
Well, you're under the gun now. You've got, you've got four months to spend this month.
Here's. And there's something else. I'm sure you know that. There's something that we would have already had this project bid. But because it's ARPA money, it's. Um, we have to follow a certain legal process, which we. Don't have that.
Yes.
Too often to realize that. And it should have been sent to the prosecutor's office at a time being anyways.
No, that's okay. Well, it will work within figure.
If you don't use the ARPA money, the taxpayers are going to get some of that general fund money as well. I promise you that.
That's not me.
Your time is up.
I said that four years ago.
Um, so I looked, I, I, I do a, I do more of an accounting view of your numbers and I look at it as of the end of your budget cycle, which would be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. At that time, your budget shows that you will have a hundred and eighteen percent cash carryover in the general fund, which just goes to the same argument. Um, you're more conservative in the, in your combined road funds. You're only at twenty-three percent, which is actually a little low, but I mean, it's, I'm not going to argue about it. Your fire ambulance fund, you'll be at seventy percent, and I take out all capital when I look at carryover. Um, so because you have two funds or two groups of funds that are over what I think are, is reasonable. I do recommend reserves. Do you consider them? Um, I don't know if you have any, uh, capital requirements in fire, for example, other than your contract. So you, you're going to have to figure out how much is reasonable in a cash carryover in that fund. Because you don't want taxpayers to pay more than what it's costing you. Uh, other than a, some wiggle room, right?
Cause we're doing deficit spending on our fire.
Well, then you're going to have to figure out the timeline, right? How, how many years does this get you before you have to renew a levy or put a new levy on? We, you know, and that's a good argument to make, but I'm just looking at the numbers and, and just calling the ball. The, the general fund, I think it would behoove you to have some form of a reserve, even if it's for just, um, the buildings. I mean, a roof can fail.
Yeah.
It could cost you fifty grand tomorrow. Do you have it? I mean, I don't know. If you don't, you should have it in a reserve and then you just go there, spend it. And start saving it again for the next time there's a failure. I, I just think today government is, has got to get more responsible in long-term planning. We are so short-term. I definitely, I'm looking, you're giving us a one-year out budget, six months before the end of the year. I mean, it's like, really? Can we make this any harder? But it's our job to look further down the road. And reserves help you do that. My staff will do whatever they have to do to help you get there. So I, I'm, I'm good with your budget. I understand what's going on and, um, I, I accept it. So you don't have an issue with. Um, whose turn is it?
Um, Chris's.
I don't think Chris has made a motion yet today.
No.
Yes, I have.
Wrong answer here.
I have some.
Second, yes.
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 We're going to sign some papers. Um, also, if you had anybody in the township that had damage from the, um, storm.
Does that include forestry damage?
No, uh, trees don't count. It's got to be structural. It's got to be improvements on the property.
Cause we have some people lost lives.
Yeah, unfortunately, they don't, there's no standard approach to that. We don't, yeah.
Unless a tree's on a house or building.
Unless it hit a house, yeah.
Yeah.
I think this is the first one I signed of all, yes. This is for you.
I would have voted.
Your temporaries at the end of the year. You won't use it till. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tami. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Yeah, she's, she's doing a real good job.
It is. It's stuff, being a newbie is stuff.
Yes, it is.
A lot of fun.
Thank you.
See ya.
Okay, next up is Montville.
Along with this new schedule.
Why is it taking us longer than normal?
Slide that down. That's the prior chief with me.
Oh, all right. Okay, we're going to open the hearing for Montville Township. Um, can you read the numbers, Tami?
Montville Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of a hundred and fifty.
Montville Township submitted their twenty-twenty-fifth budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six, seventy-one, twenty-five, requesting revenue in the amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred sixty. We will consider a hundred ninety-two thousand, nine forty-one, estimated expenses of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eighteen dollars, ending cash balance of seventy-three thousand, five ninety-four, twenty-five. Road and Bridge, beginning balance of ninety-four thousand, four ninety-eight, seventy, requesting revenue in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, two fifty. We will consider two thirty-seven, seven forty, estimated expenses of two hundred, hundred thirty-two thousand, five sixty-five, ending balance of ninety-nine thousand, six seventy-three, seventy. Fire Fund, beginning balance of a hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred fifty-seven, requesting revenue in the amount of two hundred seventy-one thousand, one fifty-two. We will consider two hundred forty-three thousand, five oh eight, estimated expenses of three fifty-nine, seven hundred, leaving an ending balance of sixty thousand, one oh eight, fifty-seven. Total millage for twenty-four, twenty-five, one point seven inside general, one point three inside road, two point five outside roads, five point nine outside fire for a total of eleven point four, and they do have a two-point-four mil fire renewal on the ballot in November. Oh, and they do have two reserve funds, uh, general fund and road and bridge.
When were those set?
Just this year.
Okay, that's why I didn't.
Yeah, they're all new.
Good, okay.
You asked for last year.
Let me go first? Okay, um, can you call up your PowerPoint? I, it's a pretty clean budget and it's, I think, look, your general fund cash carryover at the end of twenty twenty-five is predicted to be about twenty-seven percent. I, I, I mean, it's like, perfect.
That's what I'm trying to work, trying to roll with, you know, and I'm trying to go there.
Your road, your, all of your road funds combined, is how I do it, uh, come up to sixty-one percent. That's not excessive for roads because roads are so spiked on a yearly basis. You can't predict these things. You, there's gotta be more wiggle room for roads, I think. Fire and ambulance, you're, you're coming in exactly at the sweet spot, maybe a little low, but twenty-four percent because you, I, I do remove capital from this equation. So, again, that's where the reserves will help you, right? You could put away capital monies to keep these numbers level. I think that what we've seen traditionally is, as capital requirements come in, usually cash balances start to climb, then you buy the capital and cash balances plummet. And what reserves do is they keep your cash balance more stable. So, as time goes on, this will become cleaner and cleaner and cleaner. So, you're on the right track. I, I don't find anything materially wrong with your budget. It was a good submission. You did a good job. You're doing everything we're asking you to do. I can't explain. Chris will find everything wrong with it now.
I, I know. I, I, I know, Chris. I am planning to open a fire one. I did not this year with doing the general fund.
Yeah, for trucks. You gotta do that. I mean.
Yeah.
Trucks are what? How much are they?
We're looking at replacing a pumper in, I'd say conservatively, six hundred thousand to a million dollars.
Yeah, how are you gonna save that in a couple of years? You've gotta have ten years to save for that money. So, reserves are gonna fail you out. Chris, what it, or I can keep talking and have a stop.
So Karen, two years ago, you had indicated you were starting to save five hundred thousand dollars. But yet your cash balance went down. Fascinating thing to me. You, you told the taxpayers that you would have an estimated ending cash balance in two thousand twenty-three, of four thousand, nine hundred eighty-three dollars. You actually had real cash balance of two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. That's a bit off by a factor of six thousand percent. A five thousand dollar cash balance.
Doesn't get me any, it doesn't pay for salary.
You don't pay salary. You contract.
No, we pay salaries for, for fire department.
So, how much did you spend in the first quarter?
I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers. My, I can tell you the average from twenty-one to twenty-three for the year was a hundred and nine thousand. And, um, when I add in twenty-one through twenty-four, um, my average expense for my salaries for fire department come in at a hundred and twenty-one thousand.
So how in the world can you tell the taxpayer, you're only gonna have a five thousand dollar cash balance? Because that doesn't pay for the first week. I mean, it's crazy.
I understand.
You're trying to make adjustments. That will take some time.
Yeah.
But the reserve concept may be a benefit. But let's, let's go back and talk about the general fund. Currently, you have told the taxpayer that you were, two thousand twenty-three was a great year. You're only gonna have sixteen thousand dollars in the bank. That's ten percent of your estimated expenditures for the year. You actually had ten times better. That is a bit disadvantageous. You've got a lot of money. You have so much money that you can go for a year and a quarter without any tax revenue. I just think that's good budgeting. It has got to be better. And then when we look at road and bridge, and road and bridge does, you know, it has yings and the yins. Right now, based on the amount of cash that was reported for your ending cash balance, three hundred thousand dollars. That operates for two years. And you may have a project, but my notes don't have any projects.
Okay.
So that means you have so much cash, you can go for two years without any tax revenue. Unless you tell me now, you have a project.
We have two projects. One project in twenty-four, one project in twenty-five, split road with Hamden Township. Next year, and we are funding our one point five, no lobby road bridge, uh, at the end of the year.
So how much is the split road project?
We don't have estimates. Could be size four hundred dollars.
For next year?
Or wait for next round of PWC funding. Get able to do that. So, that project will actually bid out in twenty-five, actually take place in twenty-six.
So it's not even in the twenty-five budget anyway? How much do you? How much of the road and bridge fund will have to pay for that project?
I see you estimated around two hundred thousand on that. Yeah, because that project changed. It was going to be two roads combined, where we would be like seventy-five percent of that project would be Montville. And that project changed, but now it's more of a fifty-fifty on just one road. Things have been moving a lot because of the prices of the road projects, um, on that, that project, um, maybe it's out there a ways still for twenty twenty-five, around. On that road.
How much will come out of the road and bridge fund to pay for the project? Not state grants?
Yeah.
Your, your money, your taxpayers' money?
Probably around two hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
In twenty-five or twenty-six?
Actually, come out in twenty-six. Our road project would be about a hundred, two hundred, twenty-five thousand in twenty-five.
Okay. I would just encourage you to make sure that, because it doesn't, you gotta send some money back to the taxpayers. I'm the tax accountant. I know it. There's not a happy person in the county. I have nothing for you.
I didn't think it was that bad. I thought it was pretty good.
Well, I had to counteract Attorney Walter's.
I missed it. I missed it. You know, you missed a morning. Give us a lot. It's funny, um, the, uh, you know, we get a lot of these folks in here where their, their actual ending balances get way out of whack. Um, and it's a cumulative problem, but you actually went, went after that cumulative problem and, and really tried to do a first correction with adjusting your estimated beginning balances for the twenty twenty-four year, and then you carried that over to twenty twenty-five, and I commend you for that. Um, so I'm, I'm, I appreciate that effort and I think you should stop down at, uh, P Bridge and some of these other places and explain to them how you did that. So, that's all I had.
I'll move to a proof.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, two in a row. You've got ten years to spend it or it goes back where it came from.
Okay, but you can.
You can do shorter.
You're not using plan, it's not a one-way road.
It's not a one-way road. In the middle of that ten years, you want the money for some other purpose. You can close it and bring it back.
Okay.
Um, if you have anybody who had property damage, they can apply for relief on their property from the storms. Want to give you that one? Yep. Yeah, sure. That has to be structural.
Yeah.
Because it's property.
Stick your teeth.
Temporarily at the end of the year.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting Chris in a good mood.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks?
If there is such, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, can't wait.
Okay.
Not really.
I will give you more details.
Oh, can't wait. Give me the wrong date or something.
Yes, he's gonna be in our bunk tank, so.
Oh, you're doing the doctor. I couldn't make it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm changing my life schedule to come to that.
You're terrible.
I've done it before. It's cold. They don't put warm water in. They fill it the night before.
Next up is Clearedon Township. Tammy, can you start with the numbers?
Clearedon Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, one forty, fifty-nine cents, requesting revenue in the amount of three hundred sixty-three thousand, two nineteen. Uh, three hundred seventy-one, three forty-three will be considered, estimated expenses of four hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred, leaving an ending balance of three hundred five thousand, eight eighty-three, fifty-nine. Road and Bridge, beginning estimated balance of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine twenty-one, ten cents, requesting revenue in the amount of three hundred one thousand, four ninety-four, which will be considered, estimated expenses of two hundred ninety-five thousand, leaving an ending balance of one hundred seventy-two thousand, four fifteen and ten cents. Fire Fund, beginning estimated balance of one hundred fifty-two thousand, seven eighteen ninety-nine, uh, requesting revenue in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand, six ninety-eight, which will be considered, estimated expenses of four hundred eighty-two thousand, leaving an ending balance of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, four sixteen ninety-nine. Uh, millage for twenty-four, twenty-five is two point five inside general, point five inside road, two point four outside road, six point oh five outside fire for a total of eleven point four five, and there are no levies on ballot.
And I believe, um, didn't they voluntarily reduce collection on the levy?
Yes.
I.
Fire levy.
Yeah, I very much appreciate you guys doing.
Well, we can't do it anymore. Not for twenty-four.
Just for twenty-four.
We did it for six or seven. We did it for, since the conception of the levy. Well, we can't do it anymore. Chardon Fire Department, they want eight percent, eight percent increases.
Okay.
Eight percent?
Yes.
Per year, for three years?
Yes.
Do they not understand what inflation is?
It's, it's, it's hard to, they justify things so well.
Oh, yeah, they're the third rail.
I'm not sure what to do about that right now. We said, we said no to the fire department early in my tenure, you know, with their increases and negotiating.
So, let's go first. Uh, I will. Uh, if I look at the general fund, I'm, I'm extremely concerned about the difference between what the estimated ending cash balance is and the actual cash balance. In the two thousand twenty-three, actual ending cash balance, there's five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. That's enough to operate for two and two-thirds years without any tax revenue. You had previously indicated you, there was a transfer in two thousand twenty-one of two hundred thousand dollars to road and bridge. Are you gonna do another transfer?
Yes.
How much?
Uh, we're doing a hundred and fifty thousand so we can pave another road this year.
However, we just got word just recently that, that was a low estimate. We estimated three hundred fifty thousand.
It's gonna be more like four fifty.
So.
So we'd like to transfer.
So we'd like to transfer.
We will.
Okay, that, that would be a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't make that transfer, so I encourage you.
Yeah. We're gonna have to.
Paul, I'm not encouraging you.
Yeah.
It's trustees. They spend the money. You do a very good job of preparing the table for them.
Yep, she does.
If they don't transfer, it's going back to the taxpayers.
Okay.
They can either do, do this project for taxpayers. I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna happen.
We'll go, we agree.
We had estimates and we're ready to roll.
Good. I have nothing further.
Okay.
You wanna go?
You want me to go or you?
I'll go. Pop up the, so I take a look at your ending twenty twenty-five cash balances by department. General fund, as Chris alluded to, has, will have eighty-eight percent carryover. Um, I, that's high, I would say, but there's, I think there's solutions to that. Um, all of your road funds combined, gas, motor vehicle license permissible, um, the license plate tax, and road and bridge will have a hundred twenty-four percent carryover, but again, I think there's a solution to that. And your fire and ambulance is locked right in at thirty-one percent, which is optimal. I mean, I have no issue with that. So this to me just points to, you need reserve funds. You need to create, I, I would recommend, especially for general fund and road, you start putting away money for long-term things, whether it's building improvements, roofs, HVAC systems for the general fund, or whether it's a plow truck, is it, is it a, um, a, something on the road building? You can put money away. It'll drop your cash balances. It keeps him happy. It makes me happy because your cash balances go constant rather than up and down. And if you get into trouble and you need the money for some other purpose, you just, the trustees can invoke, we're gonna cash it out. We're gonna spend it for this other purpose because we need it right now and you're out of the woods. And you don't have to go to the taxpayers and say, oh, we didn't think of this, you know? So, we can help you set those up.
Okay.
Um, Jim's office has been real cooperative and putting together like a, a template of how to do it. Just follow the template to the T. It's, trouble has always happened when people want to write their own and don't do that.
Right.
You'll probably have to do a reserve study unless it's for equipment. Um, if you're gonna do it for assets, you're gonna need to hire somebody that can say, you know, I, your roof is two-thirds of the way aged, your concrete is X-aged, your windows and doors are so, and they'll give you a number to put away. And that number is really untouchable by the budget commission because it's created by a third party, um, with expertise.
Okay, uh, can I question? So, so we, we have saved for us, we have saved for, we've implemented that, we've called true.
That's why your cash balances are so high.
Right, um, yeah, um, we also, we also. Well, yeah, so, so Aquila Village, if we're going to take them on,
Yeah.
we, we're still finding out answers. The expenditures versus what they're gonna yield us.
Yeah.
That's how I can have a request into your office.
Yeah.
Where they yield us on certain things. Um, also, right now, our maintenance payroll is seventy-five thousand dollars. We're gonna have to increase it to at least a hundred twenty thousand. All right, this, this just then, folks, you know what I mean? It's.
No, I get it.
It's a variable.
And here's the thing, I, I get that this is, there is, there's nobody that comes here that knows everything or has a crystal ball. Everybody, every township, every village has, ha- have things going on that they don't know where they're gonna go. But we do know one thing. We do know that your roof every day is getting one day older. We know, we know your HVAC is getting a day older, right? We know eventually you're gonna have to put money into those things. So whether you put them in temporarily and have to pull them out to cover expenses, but at least temporarily, your numbers then appear to be more truthful to, to, to somebody who doesn't know what's going on. And they say, oh, I see, they're putting away this money for long-term things and this is how they're operating. Right now, it looks like you're operating at eighty-eight percent requirement of carryover, and, and that's just not accurate, right? We, we know you don't need eighty-eight percent to carry over.
Right.
So, I, I, I think, you know, that doesn't mean you'll keep the reserves there for all ten years. You may need to cash them out for some reason because of these other changes.
Oh, well, both our condensers, air conditioning condensers broke within the same week. That's eight thousand dollars apiece.
Yeah.
I did not reserve for that.
No.
You know?
No, and that's why you want to do that.
Doesn't stick.
Yeah, so, uh, that's, that's all I have. Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought some of the variances in the actuals and endings, um, but you've gone through this clear transition where you had Aquila, then you don't have Aquila, then you might get Aquila again, but completely, you know, take that over. That's gonna be, if that passes, which you never know what'll happen, but their taxes will go down significantly if they approve that. You know, then there's gonna be a process where the auditor, the recorder, and the county commissioner have to go through and.
the auditor, the recorder, and the county commissioner have to go through and decide what's going to happen with, with their assets, whatever monies they have, which isn't a lot. Um, so.
Percentage wise, it's a lot.
That's right. So. It's on a thousand percent. So the, um, so I, I guess to be fair, until you get, get clear of a couple of years of that, I, it's really hard for us to. You have an X factor that's never been dealt with before and it's, it's kind of hard for us to. I, I don't mind that you have the high cash balance because till you figure out what's going on, I think, I think I would keep a high cash balance too.
I don't have, we don't have the answers. We don't have the answers yet. We don't have that balance yet. And, and if a cool, if a cool village, if the people don't vote to dissolve, now there's trouble.
Yeah.
Because they're coming us one way or the other. And, uh, and right now they have money in the bank. They're not, they don't have any debt. Um, they have, they have to for our sake. And the mayor's doing a good job cleaning, cleaning his house as best he can, although they didn't do an assessment on the streetlights, so. They have thirty something streetlights. Um, and they made some lights.
They missed the window.
Yeah.
They missed, they missed a window. And, um, so.
Yeah, they'll fire that. By the second.
Monday.
Monday of September.
Would they, would they put like a clause in there like, um, for transition? Since it's a quarter voting, but it's going to be kind of like a mortgage clause.
Can't do it unless they do it now. Unless they call for a special meeting. Which I could request that of them.
Yeah, they're, they're having a lot of challenges in their, in the fiscal department.
They're having trouble getting counsel.
Yeah, I mean, they had to, they had to point to council people, just having people to put this thing on the ballot, so.
They have a good relationship. We have open communication.
They are really good people.
Yeah.
I hate to see them going through this. But.
The mayor has been fantastic.
Yes.
Um, and it, it, it's, it's just been, and, and you're right, they're, they are not in a bad position right now. They're going to be in a bad position. I think they re- realize that and had something that we don't see a lot of government that were very forward thinking.
We're January first. We're January first, right?
No, it'll be earlier than that. S, once the election results are certified, then this commission's formed. The auditor, the recorder, and the county commissioner, the commission is formed, and then they start working through the transition of the financial transition. So, um, yes, it, it actually occurs sooner than that. Um, it would occur probably in what did, what did they usually say? A couple of weeks after the election?
Um, September depends.
Maybe actually later than that. Beginning of December.
Maybe after Jan, you were actually.
It depends. Are there recounts? Are there, you know, they got to go through, have their.
The election gets heard about thirty days after the election.
No.
It depends.
Yeah, not all the time.
Well, if, either way, it's going to be around that time.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Paul, do you have any indication?
No, we're working on that. We are working on that hard and heavy. I, I just got a pack of expenditures, of their expenditures. I've not had time to look it over yet. We just got that. Um, I put a, I, you know, it's hard to get records. Um.
And they, and they don't have. I mean, that's part of the problem.
That is, I went in there and was part-time fiscal for a while on, and that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, she tried to help.
He had two people that went looking for documents and somebody went in the cabinet, pulled it out. Oh, here's a bunch.
Yeah, it's so hard to find.
It's, it's a train.
I'm sure, I'm trying to stay positive about this. I'm trying to tell my residents. I'm trying to get it, that's.
It's going to be what it's going to be. I mean, we're going to have to deal with it.
I think in the end it'll shake out. I think.
Me too.
Everybody will be better off. I really do.
Me too.
Because you're removing a bureaucracy and and, and it should be streamlined and more efficient for everyone.
I really believe that too.
Yeah, so I, I think. Are you going to have a rough go for eighteen months, maybe?
Yeah.
Um, but I, I do think we, you know, in the end, but that's why I, I would give a lot more leeway than I normally would at this. Um. Yeah, I mean, your roof, your, your general fund is creeping up there, but second, yes.
All right. Um, if you have any residents who have destroyed property from.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You can give them that or you can send them that.
Okay, and also I want to mitigate those attacks again. Remember when we mitigated last year, a lot of towns have mitigated?
Yes.
I, I want to mitigate so it's more matches normal inflation, at least three percent, three percent, three percent.
Yeah.
Is it too late to that?
No, we can do it up through the end of the year.
Okay.
And so we send our, our DTs and.
So I want to do this to get caught up.
And they will, they will work with you however you need it.
Okay, and just so all of you know, I, I, I was this close to making up a shirt that says, I have the budget commission, especially the treasurer. This close.
They're speaking of temporaries. Yeah, I noticed you did. I thought maybe you had it under your, Terry.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, next up is Parkman.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Have a good day. Tammy, can you, uh, start with the numbers?
Yeah.
We got to pick up the pace here.
Parkman Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with an estimated beginning balance in their general fund of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine fifty-one fifty-one, requesting revenue in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two ninety. We will consider two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven seventeen, estimated ending balance of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four fifty-six fifty-one. Road and bridge, beginning estimated balance of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one ninety-six eleven, requesting revenue in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven fourteen, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred, ending cash balance of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, one ten and eleven cents. Fire fund, beginning estimated balance of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and eleven twenty cents, requesting revenue in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine ninety. Uh, two hundred and nineteen, five, ten will be considered, estimated expenses of three hundred and five thousand, three ninety, ending balance of two hundred and six thousand, five thirty-one twenty. Road improvement fund, estimated beginning balance of negative point one. The fund's getting closed. Uh, total millage for twenty-four and twenty-five, one point seven inside general, one point three inside road, two point four outside road, two outside road and bridge, three point four outside fire for a total of ten point eight, and there are no levies on the ballot for November.
I'd like to go first. So, um, first of all, I want to make sure that for the record, we reflected, Parkman was the first entity to voluntarily return money to the taxpayers last year. I think you did it before the interite on, on the revale. Um, of, of most of the entities that I would expect to have returned, you were lowest on my probability. This is because I knew your financial health. It's not like you were loaded and, and had, didn't need this money. So I think the taxpayers are very um, proud of the fact in, in Parkman that you did that. So my hat was off to you. Um, and, and I always joke because oftentimes when people are generous with their money, they get, they get rewarded. And in fact, your financials are healthier this year at the end of twenty twenty-five, and I've seen recent years. I think you're doing a good job um, managing your money. A- as you can see, your general fund at the end of twenty twenty-five will level about a seventy-eight percent cash carryover, a little high. Your numbers aren't big, if that's a percentage. So you got to be careful because percentages move quickly for you because the dollars aren't that great. Um, all of your road funds combined, you're at eighty-two percent cash carryover, and I take out all capital. And then your fire and ambulance fund, you're at a hundred percent carryover, but I know you went through a transition with fire, right? And you're still learning to navigate that experience. So I'm sympathetic to that. What I do think you should consider though is setting up some reserve funds to be able to pocket some money away. I know you've had historical issues with road because of the demands for oiling or dust control versus paving, chip and seal versus asphalt. We've all had those debates and the cost deltas, and putting away money for those capital projects will help you, I think, improve everybody's well-being in Parkman. But, you know, I, I, I just want to thank you for being first and then, and then actually not coming here saying, we have no money now. You're, you have just the opposite, and, and that's, that's good. Now I think we just need to help you put together the tools that help you put this money aside for a good purpose. And, and I'm, my staff will help you however you need it. Jim has already created a template to do reserves. We can set up two as quickly as you want. And don't have to put away a lot of money, but get a study of how much you want to put away. I know you have buildings you want to reserve for certain cash requirements of those buildings. And that's responsible. Um, it's prudent and it gets it out of somebody's eyes from looking at. I don't want to name names, but his initials are Chris H. That's all I have.
Um, we are debating right now what we want to do with the mitigation for this coming year. Uh, we initially thought we would step it back, but now we're in a situation where we're inclined to get a road grant for roads, but we have to match it. So we're thinking maybe do it at all. It's forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
In the big pack.
Yeah.
Not a lot, but.
I, I would say all townships, Parkman roads are probably most in need of improvement.
We, we.
Having driven through Park.
See, those are qualified. That is an opinion. That might be fact.
No, it is fact. We, we did a lot this year and lack of this year. And, uh, we had set aside money last year to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project that fell through with the contract.
Right.
So we did it this year. We took a hundred thousand from ARPA, added on our other forty thousand, and we did a pretty good sized project. We're planning that for this coming year. It's already, uh, being put together. We've set aside forty, hundred and seventy thousand in general fund for that.
I noticed you did have a ending balance in your ARPA fund for twenty twenty-five. You mean, you can't carry it over after? Right, so you got to burn.
That, there's a project.
You just haven't gotten there yet?
We just haven't got it.
Okay, so, but I, I, I get worried because we don't want to have to get that back.
No, no, it's already accounted for. It just.
It just didn't show up in the budget.
Yeah, the job is not done.
Okay, here we go.
Mr. Price, do you want me to go? Okay, so I thought, um, the, the cash balances are, are healthy in the general fund after years of being very unhealthy. So I, I'm not going to criticize you for turning that around. If your estimates for twenty twenty-four were, well, let's talk about road bridge. I'm sorry, general. So you got way upside down in general in twenty-three because looks like the trustees spent two hundred thousand dollars less than, than they estimated in, in twenty-three, which then got you upside down with your actual ending balance. Um, but to your credit, you, even though your estimated beginning balance in this year was enormously low, you then recognized that in your budgeting for twenty-five and, and have really turned that around. Um, so again, I give you credit because they had other entities come in here this morning and they said, well, it's, you know, this has been a building problem with our, you know, you, you were way off, but then you recognized that and fixed it for next year. And I, and I, again, I give you a lot of credit for that because other people aren't doing that and they're saying, well, this is a, it's a problem that builds over years, which it is, but it can be fixed. She fixed it.
Yep.
Heybridge could have done this.
Well, I.
So.
Part of that large carryover was the hundred and forty thousand growth project that never went through, and that money was coming out of the.
General, okay. Because your road, you got a little upside down too, but not too bad. Um, and then I, I give you a complete pass on fire because I know that's just been a total fiasco, so I won't even get into that.
We are.
Uh, so you got to.
Getting better.
Yes, but you got to, you get a pass from me on that because I know that what's been going on there. So, um, so yeah, I, again, I think you, you could maybe look at this and, and say, oh my gosh, there's some issues, but I, I think you've done a really good job of when stuff didn't go through, managing it and, and making your estimates realistic. And I, I think you really did an excellent job with that. That's my take.
Is the fire building that was under construction in two thousand twenty-three completed?
It was now building ever entered construction.
So you were reserving. First you bought a tanker, or you ordered a tanker. That was in two thousand twenty-two. Well, you had five hundred thirty, thirty thousand dollars. Yeah. So what's going on in the fire? In your fire budget?
They outs, they outsourced their, their fire. They, they were, they had their own fire department.
We still did.
Didn't you touch a contract?
We were working to do that and then.
Okay.
So there's no building under construction or being considered? But you own your own equipment?
Yes.
And yet you're, uh, I'm a bit confused. Looking at two thousand twenty-three, you, you had indicated to us that you were going to have an ending cash balance of, of nineteen thousand dollars. And you were going to spend three hundred and eighty thousand. You actually spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less, leaving a cash balance of a hundred and sixty-five.
Is that on this speech?
Yes.
Yeah, somewhat. Chris is also here.
Chris has got his own little metric.
It's proprietary.
He's got like a, he's, he's copyright or nothing.
I. So is the fire department in good shape?
They're improving. We have, we were at twenty percent staffing for a long time. That's why we were looking for solutions. There, uh, currently, he has recruited more staffing. We're averaging now, I've been calculating over eleven months, some months are seventy percent, which is really good. So we're averaging around fifty-eight percent. Um, so, uh, we've had a.
That's a good change.
Oh, it's a definite good change.
Okay.
And it reflected in wages and salaries. You know, we paid out a lot more so far this year.
Okay.
Um, but if they continue at this pace, we're going to have to put on a levy because I think we're going to be about a hundred thousand short by twenty thirty, I guess is my calculation. So we're considering a levy for next year so we can cover salaries. And at some point, we're going to need a new truck, which is eight hundred thousand.
Set up a reserve for that to build up.
But that's not in the near future.
That's great.
Or is it?
Well, we want, we almost did it this year, but I, I needed more time to get it out in the community and, because there were issues there with them failing the last three levies that the previous board put on. So we want to make sure they're on board before we put that levy on. So we have a year to get them on board with that.
That would be nice. I have nothing further.
It just turns it.
I'm yours.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
If you have anybody who suffers damage from a storm, they can pull that out and get some relief. Um, they can also get it on our website, but in case you have a resident that calls and says, hey, what, what's happening?
Okay, good. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, I'll have your thing here in a second. This is for your temporaries at the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Didn't make anybody cry.
Yeah, nobody cried. There's no crying at budget commission.
You have two trustees or?
Yes, I have two trustees.
Especially get a side insurance.
Yeah.
I'm guessing you guys are going to have it here. Your own meeting.
I mean.
I, yeah, public.
Yep. Okay, so you want to open your meeting first?
Um, Tammy, you going to do it?
No, I'm doing it.
Yes.
Chester Township Board of Trustees Special Meeting Agenda, Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at eleven, eleven AM with the budget, budget commission.
Welcome.
Welcome, please.
Uh, Mr. Richter's absent. Mr. Mazurko?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of the creed.
Can you meet, can you meet them?
That's a point, a point, Dan.
We're going to open the budget hearing for Chester Township. Tammy, can you start with the numbers, please?
Uh, Chester Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of one million, three nineteen, thirty-eight dollars and nineteen cents, requesting revenue in the amount of two million, twenty-three thousand, three eighty-one oh one. And we will consider two million, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, estimated expenses of a million, nine forty-eight. Uh, estimated expenses of a million, nine forty eight, three hundred and ending balance of one million, three ninety five, seventy six dollars and nineteen cents. Road and Bridge, beginning estimated balance of six hundred and ten thousand, two seventy nine fifteen. Requesting revenue in the amount of two million, three twenty eight, five sixty two, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of two million, nine thirty three, three twenty two and twenty cents, leaving an ending balance of five thousand, five eighteen, ninety five cents. Police Fund, beginning estimated balance of five hundred and thirty three thousand, eight twenty three, eighty four. Requesting revenue in the amount of two million, eight hundred and four thousand, thirty three dollars and seventeen cents, which will be considered. Uh, estimated expenses of two million, five hundred and ninety two thousand, nine fifty, ending cash balance of seven hundred and forty four thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Fire Fund, beginning estimated balance of a million, five eighteen, one fifty five and twenty nine cents. Requesting revenue in the amount of two million, forty eight thousand, four eighty seven and eighty four cents, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of two million, two hundred and twenty two thousand, four hundred and fifty, ending balance of one million, three forty four, one ninety three and thirteen cents. Total millage for twenty four, twenty five is three inside general, five outside road and bridge, eight point nine seven outside police, six point two five outside fire. For a total of twenty three point twenty two mills and they have four levies on the ballot in November, uh, all renewals, um, all police.
One's true.
Two, two, two roads.
Road, two police.
Okay, two road, two police.
Who's first? Uh, let me start. So, I think, uh, Chester gets a prize, a good prize. You came in second place for having so much cash with four point seven million dollars and your ending balance of two thousand twenty three. That's money in the bank, that is the taxpayers' money, but you've been holding onto it. In the general fund, uh, the estimated ending cash balance for two thousand twenty three was all of two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. That's how much you told the taxpayers that you would have at the end of the year. In reality, you had one point one million dollars. You were off by a factor of four. That is horrible budget. You also have that, that much cash will pay for operation for the entire township for a full year and two months. Without any additional tax run.
Can I respond?
Well, I'm not done.
Okay.
That means you're holding so much cash, you don't need any taxpayer money for a whole year. When we go down to Road Bridge, you told the taxpayers you were going to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of two thousand twenty three. You actually had one point two million dollars. You were off by seven hundred and ninety four percent. That too indicates bad budget. When we get to the fire fund, you told the taxpayers you're only going to have seven hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year. Reality, you had one point seven million dollars. You're off by two hundred and thirty nine percent. That's trending good, but it's still being off in any budget perspective by two hundred and forty percent is lousy budget. Then we go to the police fund. You told the taxpayers, the end of twenty three, you're going to have a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. On you, that's only six percent to actually fund the police department. Which we know is false because you spend more than that in two weeks of time. But you told the taxpayers you're going to have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you actually had seven hundred and seventy three thousand, off by a factor of five hundred and eighty nine percent. That too is horrible budget. I'm not concerned about funding operations, you do that extremely well. You are holding, uh, amounts of cash that operate, at least at the general fund, it's too much money. But most important to me is this budgeting anomaly, to have seven times in reality compared to what you tell the taxpayers is wrong. And it's been going on for years, you're, you know, this is the past twenty years. Of taxpayers' monies, if it's red, it's not good, yellow is not bad, but red is not good. You are a sea of red. I have nothing for you. You want to go or you want to quit?
Yeah, I mean, I have the same issues Chris does, um, so I won't, I won't repeat them, but I, but I have the same exact issues of. You know, when you tell your taxpayers you're going to have a hundred and fifty grand at the Road and Bridge and you have one point two million. And then you got two levies on for renewal. Um, you know, what are we doing? And then, I guess that you do have a lot of cash in the general fund and then, you know, like, I'm in your police station all the time. At your facilities are, are certainly the worst in the western court or communities. Um, and, and they're, they're pretty bad, you know, even, even moving east, um, compared to everybody else. And I, I just, you have all this cash. Yet, your police department is, for, for the operation you're running is, is completely deficient from a building perspective. To, to the point where it's dangerous and it's been like this for years, I brought it up. The last chief brought it up, the current chiefs brought it up. And it's one thing to say, well, you know, our police department building isn't safe, but we just don't have the money. You, you have the money and you refuse to invest it in your infrastructure and you refuse to make capital investments. So if you're going to keep refusing to fix things that need to be fixed, because we've said it for years, then we should just give the money back to the taxpayers. Or, or maybe you should have kept a renewal levy off the ballot. But that, that's, that's my issue. Um, it, it, nothing drives me more nuts than, and I went through this with charted schools where they, they had longstanding safety, significant safety issues with their building. And, and their banking, you know, I mean, their, their situation was way more egregious than yours, but, you know, fix the problem or, or come up with a plan. Um, but instead, and again, maybe you think you don't have the money to spend because your budgeting is so far off the mark, as Chris said. So that, that's, that's my issue. I mean, I don't know how many years we can say, hey, you got too much money. You know, invest the money where it needs to be invested, but we're not investing it. Okay, at what point do we say we're, we're giving something back? That, that, that's kind of wrong. I don't know what you have, Chuck, I mean.
So I, I, um, there's a couple of things mechanically in the budget that I think needs to be fixed. One is, I, although my staff tests your transfers in versus transfers out for the budget year, which is twenty twenty five. I actually look at the current year as well. And, and there, so you've got a transfer in, transfer out discrepancy of about fifty five hundred bucks this year. So you're going to, you need to find out what that is, I don't know where that transfer was going, but I got my map shows you. Um, similarly, before we get into the percent carryovers, you have contingency line items in a variety of your funds and those are statutory. So fifty seven oh five twenty nine A one specifically sets how much you can put on the contingency line item. And I guess one of my frustrations is, I, I think this is the third year that I've found an anomaly with your contingency line item. So in Fund twenty two eighty one, you're contingencing twenty thousand dollars, but you're only permitted by law to have three percent of your current year expenditures. Which I calculate to be fifty two hundred bucks. So you, you've got to fix that or the state owner is going to have a heartburn with that. And it's going to change your balances and it's going to just add more cash, actually. It's going to, going to add to your problem, not detract. And then I looked at your cash carryovers and I look at them not historically, I look at them at the end of your budget term. So when you budget your twenty twenty four year, at the end of that year, will you have enough to survive going into twenty twenty six? And it's all based on a percentage, right? In the general fund, based on what you've provided, you'll have a hundred thirty nine percent to go forward to the next year. A hundred percent is a whole year. As Chris indicated, that, that's a lot of cash. Now, I, I think there's some justification to having that money, just not as cash carryable. Um, the road funds combined have a totally different problem. Those show almost zero carryover, which means you can't survive. And you know you have, I mean, I don't know how much your budget is for just salaries in road, it's a lot. You, you can't physically do that, that's just, it's an impossibility. So if, if you were, if, if, if it happens the way you budgeted, you can't pay your bills in road. You have to move all the money from the general fund over there to pay those bills and maybe that's your intention, but that should be, that, that should be demonstrated as a transfer or something. And then in your fire ambulance fund, you have a twenty, seventy one percent carryover, which I, is, is excessive, I do take out capital. Um, so there is some argument that can be made, well, yeah, but we're saving for a truck or an ambulance. And I'm, I'm not going to presume that because that could be down in twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, you're saving now, which is perfectly acceptable. Except I don't think a township your size should be saving for in its operating funds. I think the responsible thing to do is to save for those long-term capital expenditures in reserve funds. Because it gets it out of the radar of people looking to saying, how much are you burning for fire operations? And truly, you shouldn't include capital because capital is, every so often, you spend a bunch and then you wait a while, then you spend a whole bunch. But if you're including the saving of it, you're artificially skewing what people see and, and that's not, I don't think it's true to them. So this all points to one thing, you need reserves. And I know I've preached reserves for now five years. Uh, especially the corridor, the western corridor, which has a very high budget amount. Yours is over a ten million dollar budget. To me, there's no reason why over a ten million dollar budget, you don't reserve for anomalies. I mean, you guys know what happens, you go in one day and the roof failed in a building or the HVA C blew out and it's not in your budget. You got to have a place to go get that cash and you shouldn't just have it left over. You should have planned for that, that's what's being, that's, that's what responsible plan, planning is all about. And I think the bigger the organization, the more important it is to have that responsible planning. So I, I think you solve your general fund cash, you solve your fire and ambulance fund cash by creating reserves for those two funds. I, I, I don't know what's going on in the road, why it's going so close to zero, but it is. Um, police just didn't seem to be at, at, at optimum right now. They, and, but again, there's, there's going to be, as Jim said, there's capital requirements in the police that are not embedded in that thirty percent. So there's no money left over after you just exist. And, you know, facility age all has a factor to reserving and needing to reserve. I, I think I would really, really, really strongly recommend, if I don't see reserves created for some of this cash that we absorb in the next calendar year, I'm going to be out. And I, you, you're the first people I've ever said that to in the six years I've been on it. I'm tapping out because it's out of control. You've got departments that are broken, departments that are low and, and there's no rhyme or reason and you've got to get that manageable. And right now, reserves will help you manage that. But again, it takes three to five years to get that going. You're like three years behind, you got to get it going. So, again, this is your decision to make. I can only tell you from my view and from what my colleagues have said, we all come at this from a different angle, but we all kind of have the same conclusion. Is it, this needs to be better managed.
Patricia, what do you think your road and bridge expense is?
Three hundred thousand dollars, well, it's winter time, so you're going to have overtime. I would figure. What you need to understand, we took all of the inside millage included in the general fund and we've been transferring, we've been doing transfers to Road and Bridge. Right now, the Road and Bridge needs a roof badly. Um, and we're getting bidding in that and we, I believe, I don't know how the trustees were going to handle that. If they wanted it transferred to the road department and then pay for the roof or the general fund was going to pay for it. But we've been transferring money to the road department for roads. Last year, if you remember, that was the year that our road projects all bounced back because they went over ten percent. We didn't get done what we were scheduled to get done, so the road department had money left that we didn't think they would have left. And that was something that was out of our control. We had done all of our bidding and then everything came above the, whatever the engineer's office said, the ten percent or twenty percent over, everything had to go back out to bid. And we didn't get all our projects completed. And we're having, now we've had storms, now we're pushing pro, road projects back again. And everything has a, the general fund, I don't, the trustees were holding the money. Because we're transferring it to the road department and we've got roofing to do for the road badly. We need, need a roof. And we've got an architect on it and I, I don't know where the bidding for that's at.
Um, I'm looking at your transfers, you transferred six hundred thousand dollars from the general fund into Road and Bridge in twenty twenty four. And you show, uh, you anticipate doing the same, the same transfer in twenty twenty five.
Plus the roof, plus more.
But I'm just looking at, I'm looking at your budget. So, to Chris's question, he asked, you know, what does it cost you to survive in the, in Road and Bridge? I take out capital and that's what it takes you to survive, it's whatever your expenses were minus capital.
For three months, yeah.
That's two point six million a year.
Well.
So you need seven hundred thousand dollars to survive to your first tax deduction. Your balance is going to be five, five thousand, five hundred dollars.
It's the OPWC money and the Gates Mills for the portion of the county land project showing in those numbers.
OPWC money comes through an OPWC fund and it's an in and an out, if they're direct pay.
Yeah.
And if it's a match, it'll come out of whatever fund you're matching it out of.
Correct.
I, look, I mean, I, I'm not trying to do your budget for you, I'm, I'm simply saying that, that to Chris's point. A resident looking at your, here, here's the thing that jumped at me, I looked at your Road and Bridge fund and I looked at your unencumbered, unassigned last ending balance for each year. If you look at twenty twenty two, it was one point six million dollars, reasonable. You're burning two point five, two point seven million a year. The next year in twenty twenty three, one point one six, reasonable. This year, six hundred and ten thousand bucks. Next year, five thousand dollars.
If we did all of our projects.
Yeah, but, but.
But those are real numbers.
You can't do that.
Chuck, they're not real numbers.
Yeah.
You look at their history, there's those.
That's right.
That's the problem, that's my problem.
And, and the issue is, so you should have, it would seem to me the budget should then have reflected an additional cash transfer from the general fund. To inflate the, the carryover balance in Road and Bridge so it can survive. And that would have reduced your cash balance in the general fund.
Correct.
Which would have made his heartburn the only minor instead of major. Um, that, that, that's, that's the representation that the taxpayers need to have. I mean, they're not going to know all this detail, right? They're not.
No, they're not.
And so when you look at it, they go, my gosh, of course they need a levy, they only have five thousand dollars left. Well, that's not the real picture, right? The real picture is, you, you do have the, the intention of moving money, so that should be represented, I, I think. Just to be fair to everybody. And that, I think, will, you could, that's called manual balancing or you can auto balance it. And that's what reserve funds do, they will automatically balance all of this because your projects, your road projects will be set away in a capital reserve fund. Which don't appear in your operational math. Operational math is just, I need at least thirty percent carryover. I'm done, I'm at thirty five, I'm okay. If I'm at seventy five percent, too much. If I'm at one percent, too little. It's simple math. The way it is now, your math is very complex. We have to figure in what projects didn't get done, which ones did get done, which ones are you going to do, which transfers haven't you done yet? I mean, you can't keep track of it all. And, and, and you're very complicated from a, from a township perspective, just because you're a heavily funded township. Similar to Baybridge, similar to Russell, similar to South Russell Village, even Munson. And because you have a police department, it's an added oversight, you know? And so our responsibility is, you got to clean it up, I think. You got to make it easier to read and understand. Um, and part of that reserves will help you do that, I think. But you got, that's going to take time and I mean, and this is, this is a.
We're actually almost ready. We have the study done and we're, um, have the forms. And we're almost ready to have the B O T vote form.
Which, which reserves are you looking at? Which ones are you thinking of doing?
I wanted to do them for the general fund, road and bridge, police and fire.
And what are they for, assets? Are they for, um, equipment?
Fire would be equipment. And the police department is the building. They've gotten some money from the state they're going to get and we're talking about a new building. The road and bridge would just be for snowplow trucks and roads.
Equipment and roads?
Yes, if we can.
Are they two separate funds or they want?
Um, the way it's set up now, it's really only for equipment in the building. There's no, when I read through the reserve funds, which I need to talk to Sheila to get my head on them right. I didn't know we could do road projects could be included in that. I thought it was just buildings and equipment. We could do road projects too.
Yeah, you, you can do multiple reserves for a particular fund. So for example, in road and bridge, you could have a road and bridge fund for equipment. You could have a road and bridge fund for projects. You could have a road and bridge fund for assets like buildings. The, the more specific you make those funds, I believe the cleaner it gets. Because now you know which ones are well-funded, which ones aren't well-funded or you're going to draw. If, if you would do a big road project, for example, and you've co-mingled it with your equipment. And you run out of money in roads to pay the project, you have to cash the whole thing out. Which means you cashed out all of your equipment money too. Then you have to create it again to load, well, this way if you have separate, once you just cash out the project. Because that's the money you need. So there, there's a method to the madness, but. You could even do them for retirements. I mean, you could, there's all kinds of reserves that are available. The number of reserves available is not the problem, the problem is you have none. I think that going from zero to sum is a good step, but I think you need to figure out exactly what it is you need to save for. And, and then start doing it.
Chuck, what do you think the road and bridge actual ending cash balance will be for two thousand twenty five?
Close to a million bucks. Don't you think so?
Yeah.
That's my gut.
John also does a forecasted, you know, outside of the official documents to show where the projections are coming from and stuff too.
I feel like Jim Flay's, when you asked me that, I guess the right answer because he's usually the one that just throws the number out and it works.
For the county line road, we're loaning some of the money and we'll get a, a grant for two fifty. Plus we'll loan some of the money, plus Gates Mills gave us four hundred and fifty thousand, so it's going to make a difference.
And yet you're telling the taxpayers you're only going to have fifty five hundred dollars. Right now. It's actually going to be a million bucks.
Probably.
I think it needs to be adjusted. I am, I'm sick and tired of it. Who's motion? Are you up?
I think Mr. Do you speak yet?
Yeah, I did. It was so long ago, you forgot.
I'll make a motion.
I'll.
Okay, so you move?
He does.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to vote yes, because I want to give them time to create the reserves.
No.
No.
So what do we do?
Well, we'll talk about it tomorrow or next week.
Do you want us to redo our budget?
Well, you can't, we can redo it.
We need to close the meeting.
Yes, we will be closing the meeting at. Eleven thirty seven AM. I know you guys had a lot of property damage as a result of the storm. Um. If you have taxpayers who are reaching out to you to say, hey, how do I get relief on my property taxes as a result? Provide them this form, they can also get it on the web. It's right now, we're in the, based on the data of the, of the incident, they could get up to a fifty percent reduction. Of their valuation of improvement, like if a tree hit their house. Got to be structural.
A tree can hit the house though.
Right.
Right, but they don't count the tree, they count the structure. Uh, but it doesn't count like fences and it's got to be structures that we have a value assigned to. And then we can, that's for one year, they get that deduction. If they need it for longer than one year, they have to come to the B O R.
Okay.
Okay?
So just structural then?
It's got to be structured, only on improvements.
So if it pulled electric panel off the house or any of that kind of stuff.
That's, that's, that's a structure, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and they, and it's, it's a good thing for them to do and I encourage you to give them as much help as they can. I know you guys were, your hands were pretty busy doing whatever it is you had to do to get water to people. This is Patricia Black, so I'll give it to her. She'll need that for her, um.
I'll scan it, email back to you guys.
No, she, she needs that for her temporary appropriations again. Okay? Make sure you give it to her because I don't, I don't want to get it.
I will. Got it on record now that I have.
Attorney General.
I have come and put up, hooked up a generator to sections. To provide electricity.
So much line damage, I think that was the biggest issue.
They hooked up to the intersections and that kind of stuff, the lights and that, the stoplights and that kind of stuff.
No, no, no residential.
No.
So there's some areas, this came back out last Wednesday.
I mean, you guys were the artists, no question about it.
A lot of trees down and a lot of lines, basically.
Everybody in Russell is doing this. I'm sure it went out.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ham Township. You can open the hearing for Ham Township, it's eleven thirty nine, we are way behind. Jamie, leave out everybody on the line.
Ham Township submitted their twenty twenty five budget with an estimated beginning cash balance in their general fund of four hundred fifty three thousand, six eighty four fifty seven. Requesting revenue in the amount of five hundred eleven thousand, eight oh four, five oh nine thousand and eighty seven dollars will be considered. Estimated expenses of five hundred sixty eight thousand, five fifty one, ten cents. Ending balance of three hundred ninety four thousand, two twenty forty seven. Road and bridge, beginning cash balance of four hundred seventy one thousand, two sixty four sixty eight. Requesting revenue in the amount of five hundred thirty six thousand, one oh nine, that will be considered. Estimated expenses of six hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred. Ending cash balance of three hundred thirty five thousand, seventy three dollars and sixty eight cents. Fire fund, beginning estimated balance of four hundred forty nine thousand, eight thirty one ninety four. Requesting revenue in the amount of seven hundred thirty one thousand, one oh nine, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of eight hundred and fifteen thousand, five sixty nine fifty. Ending balance of three hundred and sixty five thousand, three seventy one forty four. Park fund, beginning cash balance of eleven thousand, two sixty nine seventy one. Requesting revenue in the amount of thirty two thousand, eight twenty six, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of thirty seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and two cents. And ending cash balance of six thousand, one twenty five sixty nine. Permanent improvement, two hundred ninety eight thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and one cents is the beginning balance. Requesting revenue in the amount of a hundred and one thousand, eight forty four, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of two hundred and twenty two thousand. Ending cash balance of one hundred seventy eight thousand, five forty six and one cent. Total mileage for twenty four and twenty five is one point three inside general. Point five outside general fund current expense, one point seven inside road and bridge. Two point six outside road and bridge, five point five outside fire. Point two five outside park for a total of eleven point eight five mils. They have two renewals levies on the ballot for November, one for parks and one for road and bridge.
Who wants to go first? What do you, okay, can you pop up the? So I, I look at your general, your, um, your cash carryover in each of your segmented funds. At the end of twenty twenty five, which is the end of your budget submission. And actually, I mean, there. I, I see a trend improvement, a dramatic trend improvement, especially in the general fund. I think there was, you're probably going to hear, I'm guessing. The general fund predicted ending balances were probably not optimal, but they're getting better and better as, as you go. So kudos to you guys. I do show a, um, you're going to see about a seventy percent carryover at the end of twenty twenty five in the general fund. Forty nine percent in all of the road funds combined, which is reasonable. Forty five percent in your fire fund and all of these are without capital. So it's kind of misleading because right now, all of your capital isn't in, in these numbers. That's why your percentages are high. You, you gotta go to reserves to get rid of that equation. I think you've heard it, you sat here long enough, there's one common mantra I'm saying this year. Reserves are, I'm convinced if people start using reserves, the, the cash balances will get, will get more constant. And that makes our job easier. Now, if you get too high, it's a simple, it's simple for us. Right now, we've got to figure out what you're going to spend the money on. And we shouldn't have to, it should just be operations. We figure one quarter, you need that much in carryover at least, move down the road. So I'm happy to work with you to set those up or to, to come out and do a presentation. But I think especially in the general fund and in the road and bridge funds, they'll help you a lot, buy stuff. That makes sense.
Did you receive the notes by chance?
I did, and I looked at them and I, I, I read them, I appreciate what you're, what you're providing. I think you're on that track, you just need to, we need to now get it done. Um, the other question I had was you have a forty three oh one capital fund. I wasn't, wasn't clear when I was doing my review what that fund is used for. Can, can you?
Well, that fund, we call it our permanent improvement, but when I get my tax sheet, it shows road and bridge.
Okay.
On the very right-hand column. Um, we're renewing that levy or we're attempting to, the point eight mil.
Right.
And my understanding is when we get that new money, that should go into the road and bridge fund. Not into our permanent improvement fund. We've been using the permanent improvement fund.
You've been using it like a road fund.
We've been using it to buy equipment for the road department exclusively.
So you don't, you tell us, depending on the ballot, I'm assuming the ballot language is a classic road and bridge.
It is.
They're nodding their head. You tell us where you want us to put that money. We don't tell you. So if it's always been put in that forty three oh one fund, that's why it keeps going. You need to tell us, please, please move that money when we collect it into the road and bridge fund. That fund will then eventually just diminish. You can get rid of it. Uh, Russell had something similar, they had a road fund where they put levy money. But then they put some levy money in road and bridge, so they had these two funds that like, how do you manage that? Just put it all in one, it's the same purpose.
And that's, that's where the reserve fund will.
You could just lay in the reserve fund and that will replace what you'd be saving for trucks, for projects, whatever you want to put in the reserves.
Right, and that's why we need the education, it's how to get up to speed with that.
We will, I will spend whatever time you need to do.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
That's pretty quick. That looks.
Well done. Thank you.
Because I'm going to take all of your time.
Oh boy.
So the general fund. Again, I'm looking at actual cash balances that were last reported in two thousand twenty three. Five hundred seventy eight thousand dollars. That's enough to operate for a year and two thirds without any additional tax revenue. That is egregious. Then we move to road and bridge. You have six hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. Ending cash balance twelve thirty one twenty three. That's enough to operate based on your, that previous year's expenses of four years. You've had increase since then. You know, you're, you're telling taxpayers this next year, you're going to spend almost seven hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure I believe it because I believe in actual numbers, not budgeting. Then we go down to the permanent improvement fund. This indicates here that. This year, two thousand twenty four, total expenditures will be three thousand dollars. How much have you actually spent this year in that?
Not very much at all, well. Trying to take the, the tractor for the roadside rolling. Definitely not this year, we're at seventy thousand dollars.
Well, this says it's only three thousand dollars, estimated expense for two thousand twenty four.
Yeah, we haven't spent very much. This is primarily we buy equipment out of that, uh, permanent improvement fund. So we did buy any equipment from it, we won't spend any money.
So you have the twelve thirty one twenty three cash balance of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. You're not, you're making about five percent interest just putting in savings. You're not going to pay tax on that. You are making more in interest than your estimated expenditures for two thousand twenty four. So that tells me you can give taxpayers three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm confused. On the blue sheet, you show in the permanent improvement fund an expense of three thousand, but on his budget submission, I show a capital outlay of a hundred fifty three thousand. How can that win transfer around the blue sheet?
For the permanent improvement fund?
Permanent improvement fund. That's current year, two thousand twenty four.
This is last year's budget.
Oh, this is, this is a year old.
This, we don't want to say it, two thousand twenty four.
Okay, that's twenty four year numbers. His budget actually shows he's going to be spending a total of a hundred fifty three thousand, eight hundred bucks out of that permanent improvement fund this year.
He just said he doesn't spend any.
No, 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 it's appropriate. He may not have pulled the trigger yet, but it's appropriate to be spent.
So they amended it.
Sure, no, the blue sheet numbers are not changed.
That's a year old, that's your, yes.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
That's what was presented to us a year ago. Correct?
Yes.
And yet they have three hundred fifty thousand dollars in the bank. That's not only bad budgeting, it's bad expensive. That means you have three hundred fifty grand right here. It's taxpayers' money and it's fun, making lots of money, five percent. But they had told us they're only going to spend three grand. In reality, they spent out three hundred fifty grand. That is.
Well, a year ago, he predicted he was only going to spend three grand.
Yeah.
Now he's, now the trustees had said, no, we're going to appropriate three hundred. That, that's where the disconnect was. No, three hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred. Yeah, there, there's a, there's a disconnect.
And, and the suggestion was made in your remarks that the permanent improvement fund will eventually go away.
Yeah, well, if, if we don't deposit, if they instruct us to not put his tax levy collection into that fund. Its revenue stream will dry up and as he burns that money away, it'll eventually go to.
Right.
Right, I mean, if that, if that's your intention.
It is.
Then, then we'll only be managing the road and bridge and the other ancillary funds, not this permanent.
Right.
And then if you create a reserve fund, it's got to separate.
And that's our intent, to get that reserve fund going.
Because then.
They're using the permanent improvement as a reserve.
Kind of is, but it's not.
But it's not.
It's considered unencumbered cash. So if you create a reserve fund, it's not considered unencumbered cash.
Right.
If you don't create a reserve fund, but you use a fund for it, we are obligated by law to roll that into unencumbered cash. That's why Chris has his high cash value. And, and that's, that's why reserves are important because it protects you and it gets it out of our radar because it's, it's not subject to unencumbered.
And that's our impression or what we've been told is to create a reserve fund, you have to have a solid plan, a solid number. And with the fire department, our plan was to build our garage alongside of their fire department, where they put it in. The funding, the chief has told us will not allow for that. We have to wait till their project is completed before any improvements that we would want on the property goes. So. One of the options we are looking at now then is with them vacating the fire department. What is the potential of converting that to a garage? Um, all along, we were planning on building it right next to the fire department. Um, money would be going out of the budget next year, but that won't happen now, that's why we need a reserve fund.
Yeah, that gets you ten years to.
Yeah, so we're looking, figuring it out. We're looking for a, a firm that will be able to tell us what kind of improvements are going to be needed to the fire department in order to make it a garage.
So the concept would be move into the old fire department. That will give us more floor space for equipment and then renovate what we have and keep it. And make that a more usable, more effective building. So we would combine the two rather than building a brand new road garage, which would solve all kinds of headaches. Because what are you going to do with the equipment if they tear down the old garage?
Right.
Um, you know, how are you going to store it? How are you going to keep people from stealing it and that, you know, that type of thing. Um, you know, how are you gonna store it? How are you gonna keep people from stealing it and that, you know, that type of thing? So renovating what we have and moving into the, the old fire department has a big advantage. It's got bathrooms, it's got a kitchen, it's perfect for, you know, what they need. And so we're looking towards that. And the other option was when the fire department finally gets land, builds their building, is there an opportunity for us to put a building on that? I mean, that's another option we have available, but that's so far down the road, we can't make any decisions right now. So we really can't get a survey going yet for our reserve fund because we don't know what direction, what path we're gonna take. It's all contingent on the fire department.
And am I correct? All of the funds and money to spend on this new fire is, is coming in from outside, right?
A hundred percent.
You're getting what, you got a grant from?
The federal.
Federal, you got a grant from the state.
State.
Grant, yeah, through Sandra O'Brien, right?
Yes, correct.
And and so for the taxpayers, that's a great thing.
Yeah.
But you want to find a way to prudently use whatever's left over, right, to optimize that old building.
Mm-hmm.
Well, using our existing funds to do.
Right, and that will be, you gotta figure that out.
Yeah, ideally, it would have been great to build at the same time. You have only one mobilization cost. You only have one set.
Yeah, because you got all this stuff inside. Right, I mean, you almost gotta move before you, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, so we're kind of, we're at a standstill right now.
And we found out this year that that's just not an option.
Right, okay.
So in the meantime, what we would like to do is start getting our ducks in a row. You know, educate us on how to get this reserve fund going, and we'll get as much moving forward as we possibly can to move in that direction, because everything takes a lot longer than what you expect it to. So.
You should be able, if you reach out to my office, you should be able to get those reserve funds populated and um in place by the end of the year.
Perfect. That'd be great.
But now that's not gonna alter your budget submission and all, next year it will all catch up.
Yeah.
And that will help you.
Um, so who do we talk to?
Jamie and Kristen can help you. They can give you the basic data you need. If you need uh hands-on help, we can send people.
We got the basic data, but we're still.
I guess I'm just concerned because if they, if if the focus of setting up the reserve fund, we need to have some kind of a study. They're not gonna have a study because they don't know.
You can give them the top.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
In order to know what it is they need to plug into the test, right?
Well, last year after the meeting, they did send us a lot of documentation on reserve fund. But when we got to the survey portion, that's where it's like, okay, now what do we do?
Yeah, well, we can't do that for you.
No.
I mean, you have, you have intimate knowledge of what it is you want to accomplish.
Yeah.
If you're reserving for a building that's in existence right now, and you just want to maintain that building, you want to protect the roof, the windows, the doors, the power plant, whatever there is in the building. That you can hire a company like Miller Dotson or one of these third-party companies that come in, and they give you a number to set away every year in order to beat, have the money present when the life of the asset expires. So they'll say you've got ten years left on your roof, you need to set, you need to set aside X number of dollars per year so that in ten years you can replace that roof.
So, so we can create a reserve fund right now just for the existing road, uh, road department buildings to maintain them and maybe improve them.
Yes.
For the future.
Yes, if you want to set it up to refurbish that building, you then need a study from an architect or something similar to that to give you some ballpark amount that it's gonna cost you and start setting aside that.
Well, that's all we would want to do.
So those are two different, two different paths, two different avenues, two different reserves. And I don't, I would, what I would encourage you to do is don't not do either because you're waiting for a while. Get the one done that you know you can do. Get that done this year and then worry about the other one when you, when you need to. He's waiting. Go ahead, Sean.
Number one, I mean, I've talked to your fire chief. I know this development with being able to utilize the old fire department building, which is gonna solve some of your problems with your, that's, that's a very new development. So you kind of got blindsided with that. I think it's upended your plans in a good way.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think you can use that fire department because it has all those facilities for your main road garage and then use the old road garage, fix it up and keep it for storage, probably, so.
Maintenance.
Yeah, I think that's great. Um, and I think you could start moving in that direction to get the reserves set up now that you probably, that's gonna be the plan that you're looking at two, three years.
Right.
Easy on that. So that's why I think a reserve will be good. I just want to commend you, you know, the trustees, and the fiscal officer, I mean, the trustees underspent, especially in Roden Bridge. You know, had, had a couple in twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, especially way underspent. Really got your number sideways. And you did a massive course correction to get your estimated beginning balances in twenty five more in line with what they'll probably be. And again, that's something that not a lot of townships are doing. And you did a, I think you did a great job with that, and it's gonna make your life with me next year at this hearing way, way easier. So um, very good job there. So.
Thank you. Is it mine?
My motion.
Sure.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, no. He gets paid by the no.
There's your rate resolution.
All right, thank you.
Um, if you have anybody who suffered damage to the property, they can submit a reduction of value, like if anybody had any structural damage from storms. Um, you want to take that, make sure you can provide it to your taxpayers, um, or just send them to us and we can help with that.
Okay, I gotta run out.
Yeah.
But Munson's budget was really, really good. Just throwing that out there.
For your temporaries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good one. All right.
You too.
Okay, Munson's up. It'd be quicker because Jim's up. Okay, we're gonna open the hearing for Munson Township. Jamie, can you start the numbers, please?
Sure, Munson Township.
Oh, yeah, you guys are, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna slide up there?
Sorry, I didn't realize you guys were.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I make a motion to open our meeting at.
It's uh twelve, eleven fifty nine.
Second. Yes.
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 Okay. Okay, Munson Township submitted their uh twenty twenty five budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of four hundred and seven thousand, nine fifty six, thirty cents. Requesting revenue in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy one thousand, two sixty seven. Uh, the budget commission will consider one million, two hundred and seventy three thousand, two ninety eight. Estimated expenses of one million, six hundred and one thousand, one ninety six. Ending cash balance of eighty thousand, fifty eight dollars and thirty cents. Roden Bridge, beginning estimated balance of a hundred and twenty five thousand, ninety seven dollars, eighty four cents. Requesting revenue in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety six thousand, nine ninety three, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of one million, three hundred and thirty eight thousand, three seventy. Ending cash balance of thirty eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, eighty four cents. Fire Fund, beginning cash balance of three thousand, five hundred dollars. Requesting revenue in the amount of one million, eight forty seven, seven ninety, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of one million, eight hundred and fifty one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, leaving an ending cash balance of zero. Uh, total mileage for twenty four, twenty five is three inside general, five point eight outside Roden Bridge, six point eight five outside fire for a total of fifteen point six five. There are two renewal levies on the ballot for November, uh, both for fire.
Chris. As has men observed over the past several years. Budgeting does matter. To tell the taxpayer that you're only twenty eight dollars remaining, fund that spends almost a million dollars is. So currently, looking at the ending cash balance of twelve thirty one twenty three. You told the taxpayers you would have an ending cash balance of sixty thousand. You actually had two hundred and sixty thousand. Sounds like a lot of money. You are off by almost four hundred and fifty percent. Now, the Roden Bridge Department, you spend a million bucks a year. I'm guessing it costs a quarter million dollars a quarter to operate. Yet you're telling the taxpayers you've only got thirty eight thousand dollars, so you can't pay your people. But we know that's not the truth. You have plenty of cash to pay your people. I believe your budgeting needs to be far, far better. And when I look at the fire levies, you work very hard to make sure you spend every dime. But you own your equipment, but you contract out for services. Is that right?
Correct.
But you have no cash to buy any equipment. Do you escrow monies saved for equipment purchases? Because you've got millions of dollars invested in this equipment, which you own. But yet, I don't see any monies being saved to replace these items. That's bad budgeting too. So I'm not concerned with the amounts of monies that you have. I'm concerned with your budgeting system. I find it unacceptable. I have nothing for you.
So I, I mean, I I, I think the challenge that you have is that you've historically done what we call zero-based budgeting. Which means you try to appropriate as much as your cash as you can every year. And while that's the approach to budgeting, and it, and this is well before Todd was there. While that's an approach, it's not transparent. That's really the problem. So unfortunately, coming out of zero-based budgeting is really difficult. It, it takes, could take five years to, to start doing it. So if you look, you look at your cash carryovers, you're, you're the anomaly of the thirty two we're hearing in the next, just the next two days. Everybody else is forty percent, thirty percent, fifty five percent, some over a hundred percent, right? You're at a single-digit cash. We know that's not true. You're gonna have more than a single digit. But the trick is getting, how do you get, how do you get out of that mode when you're always zero-based budget? And so I, I'm not sure that there's a one answer for that. I think a.